You are live.
Thank you, Kate. All right, we're going to convene a planning and zoning meeting on Thursday, June 27, 2024 at 5:00. First thing we'll do is we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, do a roll call. Mark?
Mark Borquist.
Jamie O'Connor.
Dave Lyons. Mike Harmer.
Fred Townsend.
And we have town manager.
Bill Zopra, town manager.
And online, we also have Commissioner Jack. You want to announce?
Yeah, Jack Rutherford.
All right, and we have some town officials. Dawn, and then Jim. Are you there, Dawn? So I see her there.
Yes, I am.
All right, and then Jim Deeds, I think. I see a Jim there, but at one point I did, yeah. All right, so first thing we'd like to do is a motion to adopt the agenda, and we're just going to keep it the way it is. Thoughts about doing some easier ones first, but we want to just go ahead and nail it, nail the Nalu one to start with. So can we get a motion?
Motion.
All right, a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of keeping the agenda as is? Aye. All right, seeing no nays. We've adopted the agenda. Now, the March 1st, 2024 meeting minutes emailed to you guys, so looking for a motion to approve, or, yeah, to approve it, and then a second, and if there's a discussion, we'll discuss amendments there.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, thank you. Look over.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion, changes, or adjustments? All right, I see none, so looking for a vote to adopt those meeting minutes. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Seeing nays? All right, done deal. So we'll open the public hearing one, the first one, which is regarding a proposed expansion of the existing conditional use for the property located 1308 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, formerly known as MAP 2306, partial 220.00, located in zoning District RB2, as submitted by Reagan Derrickson, authorized member of Nalu LLC. So first thing we'll do is just a little discussion. I mean, the application was posted online, some revisions, and there's moving some things around, so I think we'll have them present exactly what that is, but we do have copies, and we've studied that before the meeting, and others may have seen it also. And what we'll do is want to see if any planning and zoning commissioners have any thoughts or comments before we hear the presentation of exactly what we're planning on doing. I have none myself.
No, wait for the presentation.
I'll wait as well, yes.
And Jack, you're good with waiting?
I'll wait, yes.
All right, so any town officials, any comments, Bill, or Fred, or Dawn, or Jim?
Not at this time.
Seeing none at this?
Well, I'll just say, for the audience's sake, I think the board is aware of this, that any significant change to an existing conditional use permit requires a submission to this process, which is the same process as would be required of an applicant to establish a conditional use permit in the first place, which involves public hearings held by the Planning Commission with a recommendation to the commissioners, and a second public hearing to be convened by the commissioners before approval can be granted. So it's a two-step process. This is the initial phase of the effort to amend the conditional use permit.
Great, thank you, Fred. Yes, we will, it's, the two steps is a great democratic process, and we'll just go ahead and get Nalu up on the stage to tell us what they're trying to do, so we get all the facts straight.
Good afternoon, for the record. Elio Batista Jr. of Parkowski, Gherken, Suezzi, on behalf of Nalu LLC. As the chair indicated, we're here with respect to the conditional use application for the expansion of Nalu. As indicated, a revised plan was submitted to the town and council, and it was unanimously recommended for referral to the Planning Commission. The purpose behind the revision was to ensure that it now is a by-right site plan, meeting all the town requirements with respect to parking, setbacks, et cetera. With respect to that, such that the plan has now been revised, it complies with all legal requirements and meets all codes, setbacks, and FEMA requirements. It is appropriate and thought out, is consciously made to ensure consideration of public health, safety, morals, and the general welfare. There's adequate off-street parking and compliance with town ordinances, and Nalu has included necessary safeguards for the protection of surrounding property, persons, and neighborhood values. I do understand that there has been some comments submitted with respect to the application, and although this is a by-right site application, which meets all the legal requirements, it's good to have some background. And I'm sure all of you know Mr. Derrickson, but it's important to note that Nalu has been in business for 17 years. Mr. Derrickson, a resident his entire life here, has been the sole member and owner. Recently, the Alcohol and Beverage Commission conducted a compliance audit to verify Nalu's full compliance with all the ABC rules and regulations. And most notably, there have been no violations for anything ever issued from the Town of Dewey to Nalu or Mr. Derrickson. Mr. Derrickson and Nalu will continue to adhere to all town ordinances, including all local Louis ordinances, and all other local county and state laws, ordinances, regulations, and rules. If the commission has any legal questions, I'm here to answer that. If there's any technical questions with respect to design, placing, and considerations, Mr. Derrickson is here to answer those questions.
All right, thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Okay, no questions for you at this point. Where we're going to take this at this point is planning and zoning commissioners. Let's start with Jack Rutherford online. Do you have any comments at this point?
Not at the moment, but I might have a question or two, as others on the commission speak.
So we're going to hear from the public.
Yeah, right. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to go seven steps here. We're going to go P and Z. Dave's going to make some comments. Town manager, the town, then you, or you can go now, and then public, and public who's here, and then public who's online.
So I think for the commissioners to have the full recipe of this, we need to hear from everyone. So if you ask questions now, you're probably going to find yourself, or could possibly find yourself, asking other questions later on, following the completion of the public hearing. And I think the applicant should probably continue with the technical presentation that they proposed to make, so that if we had any questions of the proprietor, they could be taken into consideration as soon as possible.
All right, so technically, you know, what, you can see that you're working on that area that's hatched out, and that you're moving the stage, and you're putting in some doors, so Reagan, can you just go through just some factual details?
You know, I know some may not agree with me, as we've seen with some of the letters, but in my opinion, where the stage is now, where it is right on the deck, so you can have sound going left and center to the highway, this new one with the expansion of the inside, which is only 750 square feet of patron use added to the existing Nalu, 1,600 total, with it more interior location, more to the center of the property, it completely cuts off the left side from where it is now, and I thought it would be a better plan when coming forward for everybody.
So, Mr. Derrickson, that was a, that was a point that was made to the commissioners when you asked for the commissioners to send or refer your application to the Planning Commission. I think in terms of the public hearing, maybe you could start a little bit from the, a little bit earlier on in the process, and tell us what it is that you're trying to accomplish from the start.
Well, I wasn't thinking about anything until the code was changed. You know, a lot's happened in Dewey over the years. You know, it started in 2008. We had two buildings then that were both under 2,000 square feet of patron use at the time, which was allowed. In 2015, I tried to combine the buildings, did not get the parking variance to do that. And then eventually, the code was changed to, for every 200 square feet of patron use, one parking spot was required, so I realized that if I demolished the original Ponos building, if you remember, I could get within the code and put the outside deck. That was in 2019. 2020 happened, COVID shut everyone down. It was encouraged by the state and towns that we could have outdoor seating, that would be the safest thing. Obviously, during the emergency, that made sense for everyone, but when the emergency was over, you can tell me how many of those outdoor patios stayed with no regards to codes or anything, really. So, I mean, most of the business owners, which I do not blame at all for getting whatever they got, knew I was upset with that after I just destroyed a building to get within the parking code. It was upsetting, but I moved on, whatever. But since then, the code's been changed, not because I asked for it to be changed, the council decided it needed to be changed. I assume for more investment into the town to keep making it better. So I put together this plan, and the one, the one problem that I have with the current plan is, as much as outdoor space sounds great, but if it rains, I lose most of my seating. And this indoor plan expansion will allow me to have more indoor space, because as much as we want Dewey Beach to be a year-round resort, it's not. There's really only 100 days that you can really make enough funds to carry you through the winter into the next season. So this plan also allows me to be more enticing for private parties in the off-season, when traditional restaurant business really isn't to be made. I got the biggest hotel across the street from me in town. In November, we were lucky to do $100 in sales. I would love to be open. I have two places in Rehoboth, year-round business, not Dewey Beach. So this plan makes sense for that, and that's how I got to this, to apply for it. I thought it was more considerate, even though I feel I've been in compliance. You know, when I saw the one letter to the editor from Mr. Lodge, you know, I went around with the sound meter, checking. Once again, I know there's one person, won't say her name, we just want to see eye to eye on it, but I'm in compliance. You guys set the ordinances, I followed them. And when I went down Van Dyke Street, after that letter came in, it was between 45 and 55 decibels. The only thing that was spiking at over 65 was a little girl riding her bike. She was ringing the little bell on there. That spiked it. So what am I, what am I supposed to do as a business, other than follow your codes and ordinances? You know, if I was breaking it, Mr. Zopra would call me and say, "You're breaking the code. You're breaking the ordinance. What are we going to do?" And I would fix it, but I'm still trying to operate as a business. So this plan, I thought, would help with the situation with my neighbor, you know, right next to me on the highway. She doesn't see it that way, even though it will, because it's just more interior. I mean, why would you want a stage here, right where it is now, with a sliding glass door that has no conditions to close at 11? It does not. I know there's some miscommunication out there, but that's a fact, and Mr. Zopra can back that up for me. So we take this stage, and we move it to a more interior here. I don't see how that's not better. Any questions?
Can everyone see? I know what he's talking about, because I'm following. Does everyone?
Oh, sorry.
I do have a question. On the, I guess it's going to be on the south side of the building that you're talking about here. There's a, I can't tell what the external wall is. Is that a solid wall? I think if I drove by today, it's like a bamboo wall today, so I guess...
So on the existing deck, that's a two-story bamboo wall. If you continue to the new expanded side, that's an enclosed wall with no windows, sliding glass doors, or anything on that side. It's completely closed. So that's kind of my point, that we're moving into a room opposed to where it's now, right on the deck.
Right. So just so I'm clear, that whole southern wall is all closed, all the way through down to, I guess it's Route 1. Is that right?
The deck, no, there's landscaping. So the existing deck stays the same. You see the landscaping spot that's in there. The new spot, where you see the two sliding glass doors right there, next to that big family table, the, that wall inside, the new expanded area, everything is indoor. All the new is indoor.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know.
What side walking system? Is it masonry, or is it stick-built?
I would probably stick with the stick.
Okay. What was the answer?
It was stick-built. It'll be studs, drywall, whatever on the exterior.
And that's, and remember, there was a building there, which was Ponos, that was made out of sticks, and I had no issues with my neighbor at that time when that building was there.
All right, thank you, Reagan. Anything else?
So you're adding, you're adding the four tables plus the one long table? Is that...
That's correct. That's, in Hawaiian language, ohana means family, so it's the ohana table, which was also the name of the venue, which Ponos later became and did before it was destroyed. But that's, you know, we get a lot of families in town that want a place to eat, you know, reunions. People walk up to the host stand and say, "Hey, I have a twenty-top," and like, "You're going to give us a minute? We're going to figure that out." So this table kind of alleviates that problem by having a larger table.
So the other tables are four-top tables?
Correct.
And that's what they're going to be, right? They're represented to be four-top tables.
Every table and chair on this plan is going to be represented, if it's completed and approved.
Just wanted in the record, that's all. Thanks. So there's no stand-up service in this area around the stage, right? I mean, I know you know the answers to these questions, but I just want to ask them.
Stand-up service?
Somebody standing up, asks for a beer, you can't sell it to them while they're...
No, there's no, there's no countertop service.
There is an addition of another bar, is that correct?
Okay, there is a bar.
There is another addition of a bar with one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe a dozen seats at that bar.
A little less than that, but that's really to help the service of the entire restaurants, as we're adding seats in the existing bar, and I have a bartender or two in here right now, they would attest that it gets a little jammy on nights, so this will help alleviate the additional seats.
Okay. Hey, Reagan, is, inside there, the two four-tops right there off where the old stage is, are they, did they get swung around, or are they new? See the two there?
The two, where the existing, right, so right there, that's the two, the two four-tops you're looking at, in the old building, those are new.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
That's where the existing stage is now.
Right, so when we first talked about, we said, I heard him say four, so actually yours is only six, just so it, because you're either four on the new part, and then you're going to move these two right here.
Mr. Townsend, you were talking about the four in the new expanded area.
I was talking about the new area, yes. But there's still, there's still new tables, that's all.
There's new tables in the old, existing where the stage is now.
I got it.
Fred, anything else? Bill?
Mr. Derrickson, would you explain what your exterior walls are going to be in the new area? I know you did the south side, but could you talk about the east side and the south side, and talk about those rooms that are on the east side of the building also? What, what's going to be in there, and, you know, how big those rooms are going to be? Because if your stage is where you have it there, that's going to provide a little bit more of a buffer, I guess you could say, on the east side of the building.
On the east side of the building, we have the two new bathrooms, and two handicap bathrooms that are added behind the stage. And just one thing to note, the name, my neighbors in the Dewey Villas, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there was any opposition from them, in fact, support, because they're my closest neighbors, and they've had no problems with me in regards to noise, and one of the main things is because we have all the stuff logistically in the back part to absorb it.
What will that wall on the east side, will that be stick and drywall, it's like the south side?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then as we look west towards the four tables that go out onto the deck, what are you going to have across there?
Are you right where the sliding glass door part is?
So it's going to be sliding glass doors?
Yes, those are...
All the way across?
Those are two sliding glass doors. They don't make a sliding glass door that big to go all the way across.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one more question. The current conditional use, I'm going back, I've got documents from 2007, it says, "The windows of the building area of the restaurant will be closed at 11:00 PM to prevent noise in the area." It says windows.
That's right.
In your mind, does that also include the sliding doors?
No, sir. The plan, so back in 2007, there wasn't a sliding glass door there. It was a wall, because there was two buildings there. In 2019, when I went for the expansion of the deck, the plan says sliding glass door, and the original conditional use clearly says windows. I mean, it's a door and a window, in my mind.
Right. So in terms of closing a window at 11:00, does a sliding door, in your mind, equal a window? Is it the same thing?
Just to put it out there right now, I have no problem closing these sliding glass doors at 11:00 as an added conditional use, if it helps everything here.
Just asking a question, would you consider a door and a window? I think that's very helpful to offer that suggestion.
So many of us are aware that for these outside dining areas, there's an 11:00, there's a rule that at 11:00, you've got to stop service. So could you just tell us what your policy is, how that works? I mean, it's not as if at 11:00, everyone disappears. So how does it actually work? How's it function?
Well, around 10:30 PM, my management is instructed to let everyone know it's on the deck, that the deck closes at 11:00, and, you know, any last orders need to get in here, and, but at 11:00, there's nothing else service to the deck. Now, if people linger out, they're finishing their sandwich, their drink, we don't go out and, we let them know, hey, you got to clear the deck, but we don't drag them off.
So what times your kitchen close?
My kitchens are open until 1:00 by ABC law, all the way until I close.
Okay, but if you're out there at 5 minutes of 11:00, and you order, you know, a three-course meal, you're not...
We take last call at 10:30 out there, so you can't, you can't even put the order in.
Okay. So it's mostly drinks at that point, that would be ordered between 10:30 and 11:00?
Not necessarily. We, and like my attorney said, we're in compliance with the food alcohol ratio, with the ABC just audited unannounced in April.
Mr. Chair, so I have another question. What are your hours operation Monday through Sunday?
Mondays through Sun, well, let's do, Sunday through Thursday, just to make it easy. We used to be open to one, but Dewey is not the same Dewey that it was when I first opened, in my opinion. Dewey has changed a lot. COVID kind of accelerated that, and this is all my opinion. A lot of the houses were bought up and changed, and those individuals that have bought those houses don't rent them back out. They don't Airbnb them, so the big party houses don't really exist, so there's not as many nighttime people out as there was, and to answer your question, so now this year, we close Nalu at 11:30, Sunday through Thursday, and still 1:00 AM Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
I was not aware, I don't stay awake that late, anyway. One of those.
If there was business, I would, may have considered staying open, but it's changed.
Yeah, it has changed. You're right. Exactly. That's my opinion, I agree with you. Thank you. So Fred, are you, any other questions?
Just to follow up on the sliding glass door, if, if that ended up being a condition, how does that work, if that's how people are coming and going?
Well, it's not egress.
It's not?
It's not.
Okay, well, there you go. All right.
They go right, they go through, right through there, Fred. If you see my finger, you know.
Got it.
There's two back doors, one front door, and then you can take the boardwalk down the ramp to the stairs on the west side.
Understood. Very good.
All right. Fred, anything else?
No.
No?
We need to hear from staff and the public.
All right, so let's go with staff. Dawn, and, Dawn first, and Jim, I guess, if that's okay? Any comments, Dawn?
Yes, what I would like to say is that in looking at the revised set of plans, the patron area for, for the whole restaurant, which includes deck and the new addition, but of course, that deck is part of the original restaurant currently. Everything came under the 4,000-square-foot rule. We worked together with the architect to be able to have the patron area be compliant when it came to these 4,000-square-foot rule and off-street parking. And so one thing I would like to clarify is that I have not received construction documents, nor any FEMA documents to verify that this addition is code-compliant with those items. Of course, it would be somewhat premature to have provided all of those documents and gone to that expense if for some reason, this particular expansion could not go through approval. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dawn, and we're confident in the town's ability to assure that anything that gets approved as a construction permit will be where you need it to be, since you are the town code official, and we have the town manager here. So we'll stay in our lane at planning and zoning. Thank you. Jim Deeds, are you out there, and anything you want to say at this point?
Aye.
Can't hear you, Jim.
I am back online. No, I just want to comment that we've, we've had discussions with Derek in the past. He followed all the requirements that we asked for in parking, when it was a tough time for Mr. Derrickson, his, as a result of the code, the code having changed to allow no parking up to 4,000. This is a logical request that comes in, which eliminates that, and I think this makes a lot of sense. The one thing that we were all kind of surprised was, we assumed that when we said closing windows, we thought that would have included the sliding glass doors, and regrettably, we weren't as thorough in our conditional use applications and requirements. So anyway, that was the only fault that we thought we may have mistaken. I'm not blaming Mr. Derrickson at all, I'm just saying that was an issue for us, and we had concerns, and we had to address that with some of the public, not many, mind you. That's all.
Thank you, Jim. I think I see two town commissioners here, Gary Persinger, and I, and I think Paul Bowers back in there. Am I missing anyone else? Any other commissioners here? I'm not seeing. All right, just wanted to make sure you're recognized and have an opportunity to thank you for attending, and at this point...
Could I ask one more question of Mr. Derrickson? So what would your schedule be? Like, let's say theoretically, you were approved in 60 days. What's your next step? When would you plan on making this renovation, and how would, how would it work?
Regardless right now of approval or not approval, I'm closing Nalu for the season October 13th, because the business just isn't there after that. My hope was to attain a building permit pending approval to start immediately after the closing date.
And that this is a renovation you could complete in time for next season?
The goal would be by March 6, 2025.
All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, at this point, we'll go with public, public comments for folks that are in the room that want to speak. If I'm allowed to limit it to three minutes with the crowd?
Well, let's see how many people want to, want to speak. Could we get a show of hands, how many people would like to be heard?
And we're going to, we're also read-off letters. You know, we're not going to read each letter, we're going to do, you know, for and against, and things like, we've got a talent.
So it looks like we have about six people, or did I undercount?
All right, well, let's just go with those, let's just go with those that are here, and it's...
Let's say, let's say three minutes, and see how it goes.
Yeah, three minutes, see how it goes. So those that are four, let's take, let's take the fours, you know, that support this, and then we'll go against this. So who's, who, who wants to speak for? All right, gentleman right there in the glasses, if you'd come up to the podium, then state your name and address quickly, and we'll...
Hi, my name's Chris Phillips. I live at 112 Reed Avenue, and I'm just here to support Nalu and their expansion. I feel like it's a, it's a great bar, it's an older crowd. In my opinion, it has an older crowd, it's not as wild as some of the others. Expanding it out, having another bar will, will decrease the congestion in the area, make it a little more friendly, and more convenient.
All right, thank you very much.
Could I have your name again, please?
Chris Phillips.
Phillips, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Gentleman right here?
I'm Sammy Awias, partial owner of the Gold Leaf Hotel, and the next-door neighbor of Nalu, and, and his aggrieved other neighbor. I'm sort of sandwiched in between them. I want to support Nalu's decision to do this, because I actually think it would be nicer for both of, of us, because I remember when Ponos was there, and we had that solid wall, there was no sound, none whatsoever. At the same time, I would also like to support my other neighbor. I know that the ordinances have always been that sound is measured at the street level, but that's not how sound flows. Sound will bounce off of the floor, off the decking, and move upwards. So she's not wrong, but at the same time, I think that this is, this is good for us, and also, I recognize that Reagan, all this time, has done the best he could to, being his very, very next-door neighbor, I know that he's tried. So I appreciate, it's an imperfect situation, yeah.
Bill's got a question?
It's okay to ask a question.
So it's encouraged, yes.
Yeah, so you manage owning the Gold Leaf.
Yes.
Do you get complaints about the noise coming out of Nalu from your customers?
No, no. I'm actually speaking on behalf of a resident. I actually live next to Nalu.
Okay.
So you're the house between them?
That is correct, yes. And, and the thing is, is that, I know that's, I've had interesting effects. I get, the loudest noises for me happen at the weirdest times. So, so I know that that sound doesn't... that sound doesn't travel the way that ordinances lay out. So I would like to support my neighbor. She's not crazy. She's not wrong. But at the same time, I also recognize that Reagan has absolutely, in my opinion, done what he could to be right by us. And I think having a solid wall between the stage and the rest of us would be great. I remember when Ponos was there, I had no sound, none. So, but, you know, he was a good neighbor. We were paying him. She's a good neighbor. So please don't anybody give her a hard time.
All right.
So you said earlier on that this would be good for us. This is good for us, was your quote?
I'm not sure what her opinion is. I haven't talked to her.
No, no, I mean you.
But for myself, I think, yeah, I think that it would deaden the sound for the stage to be indoors. I believe that.
So when you say good for us, you mean in terms of the sound?
In terms of the sound, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
No, thanks for your testimony.
Do you like me to speak after that?
Is there any more in favor?
In favor?
All right, yeah. A gentleman in a Texas hat.
Tennessee!
Tennessee!
I noticed that the baseball team here is represented.
I meant to say Tennessee, really. I went to Mississippi State. My bad.
SEC, we'll go with it. Ezek Fergowski, resident, Bellou Street. I'm not going to go with all the titles that everybody else can throw out of what they were, what they are, and who they are. A person that really, really believes, since I met Reagan back in '09, this gentleman here has done everything the right way. He does everything thorough. He does everything the proper way. Trying to make the South Side of Dewey as prosperous and as vibrant as the other parts of Dewey, I think he's doing it the right way. I don't think he shortcuts anything. I don't think he tries to say one thing and do another. I just want to say he's a quality individual, quality restaurant, quality bar, quality people working there, and I totally support what he's doing here. So I give him my own divided of support as a resident, and anything else I can follow up with, I would support him wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Gentleman in purple?
David Karp, 11 Collins Avenue, 30-year Dewey visitor, 20-year property owner. I just want to say that I actually was at Nalu's opening night. I will say that for as long as I've known Nalu, I will say this town has changed a lot. I'm really appreciative the way this town is embraced by family. I have two daughters who just left their teenage years. The restaurants welcome my daughters. They welcome me. They really do create a family environment. I'll tell you one thing that's very often overlooked is, I had teenage girls up until about a month, month and a half ago. My teenage girls don't want to go to VanderWendy's and have ice cream and go to bed at age 19. My teenage girls don't want to go to the Rehoboth Boardwalk but once a season. But by having the Deck and having live music, Reagan and Nalu have created a family environment where I can sit with two or three other couples. We could bring our kids. We can watch live music in a safe environment. We can enjoy ourselves as adults responsibly. I can have my adult children with me, and it really is a family environment, and they are welcome. I can tell you that they are absolutely adherent to the policies on the Deck. I can't tell you how many times we've had two or three tables, and those are big tables on the Deck, where they have just said, "Sorry, guys, it's last call," and you know what? We leave. We leave. We don't... So by this expansion, creating more space, given as the business grows and the town gets a little busier, really is conducive to creating that family environment. It is conducive to kind of the environment that I aspire Dewey to be. I remember what Dewey was. I don't know how many people here. I've been coming here since the early '90s, okay? It's changed a lot. It's changed for the better. I'm proud to come here with my daughters. I'm proud to do things with them, but there's very little to do in this town with teenage girls, especially as a family. So I just don't want that to get overlooked. It is really a valuable asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in favor?
Hi, my name is Rob Burton. I live in 133 Kings Creek Circle in Rehoboth, but have always been a lifelong person in Dewey. My family's been here. My grandfather owned a city block here at one point in time. It was our farm. And so we go way back, and the Derrickson family goes way back. And I've known Reagan for a very long time, and everything he does is top quality. My wife and I frequent Nalu, and now our kids are grown and living in the West Coast. But when they were here, we'd go there as a family, enjoy their food, enjoy the drinks, enjoy the entertainment, see other families that we knew there, and that still continues to this day. It's a great crowd. It's not a rowdy crowd. He provides great entertainment, whether it's a DJ or a single person playing the guitar or a two- or three-piece band. Always under control, always reasonable, and we really appreciate that. We went to a thing there in the winter that was really nice. It was piano music, and it was a great event. And I have to emphasize, too, that if I haven't already, that the food there is outstanding. I mean, it's not Four Michelin Stars, but it's much better than bar food that you'll ever get. I mean, absolutely, we go there to eat as much as we go there to have a nice cocktail and see friends. So I want you to take all that into account when you're making your decision, because this is only going to make that situation better. And if anything, I think this expansion will reduce any noises that may have dissipated from the property before. And that's my statement. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions by me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in favor at this point?
So might there be anyone online who wants to speak in favor?
We can do that, okay. Online in favor? Let's see. I don't see anybody unmuting, so at this point, we'll assume there is no one going to talk in favor from online, and we're going to move to the in-the-building people who'd like to talk that are not in favor. Anybody raise their hand. All right, you're up.
My name is Jill Carr. I've lived on Van Dyke since 1974, and I wouldn't say that I'm not in favor. What I'm concerned about is the noise. As Sam will agree, it is excruciatingly loud. It does not have to be that loud. And point in reference, since Ken Lodge's letter went to the newspaper, they have been very quiet. It has not been loud since that newspaper article came out, purposely, I believe. Makes it say that it is possible for them to lower the volume and to live peacefully with its immediate neighbors. Not the people that live in Rehoboth or the people that live in Reed Street. It's the people that the sound is bouncing off the Hyatt and going down Van Dyke Avenue into Peachtree's back porches into people's, you know, when they're trying to have dinner. At 10 o'clock at night, I had to leave my dining room where I was working because the noise was so loud, I could not hear the person on the phone I was talking to. They can do it at a lower decimal. And by, when I look at that plan, you know, my dad's an architect. I've been looking at plans my entire life. I see an open-air music venue. Those sliding glass doors will always be open. Though where the stage is, the music will be forced to the Hyatt, will bounce off the Hyatt, and come back and hit all of us even louder than what it is now. It's been very difficult to live with Reagan. I have known him for over 30 years. I thought he was a friend. He would never picks up the phone and calls me and says, "Whatever. You know, let's talk about this." He's never, I would invite him up to our dining room, our living room, where I can't even watch the television because the music is so loud, unnecessarily loud. There are a lot of people on our street that don't go to Nalu because the music is so loud when they're inside. So I question those sliding glass doors. I question at 10 o'clock at night, the music projecting outward? I mean, how are they going to stop where the band is? The speakers on the stage would project outwards. I have a friend at the Hyatt who wears earplugs because she can't handle it. She's gone to the police. She's asked them, and she's gotten no reprieve from them. So because there might not have been a police report or whatever, I think the police were in the favor on their side in this last administration with the last chief of police, that they weren't helping the residents. And again, I'm not against Reagan. I have known him since he was a teenager. We went to his weddings. You know, I'm not saying he's not a good person. He's just not working with us and turning the volume down when it's possible to turn it down, because he turned it down the past two, three weeks. So it is possible.
Thank you.
Well, we have questions for you.
I've no.
Could I ask a question of you, please? Do you mind? Because you can't be heard by those who are monitoring.
I understand.
So is there anything about this expansion that might be addressing your concern?
No, because the music's going to be pushed right out to the Hyatt and right back to us.
Okay, you heard some talk about a solid wall versus...
There's going to be, what, 10 feet, 20 feet of a solid wall there?
So you don't view that as helpful?
Well, because the music's not being projected to that corner. The music's going to be projected outward to the Deck. And when we asked, one time I talked to the police officer, he said, I said, "Just ask him to..." It's like at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock. 12:30 at night, I have had the call, when there had been people on his Deck at 12:30 at night and said, "Please, you know, my nieces is here. They can't get the baby to bed. Ask them to turn the music down." He said he didn't have to close the windows because they, I mean, the doors, because they weren't windows. Rather than working with us and closing those doors, those windows, those sliding glass doors, he defiantly said, "Well, we don't have to. They're not windows. They're doors."
So closing those doors at 11 o'clock?
I just don't know how, you know, where the stage is, where it's set up, you can see the larger part of the stage, the band's going to be facing that way. The speakers are on a stage. They're going to be facing that way. I just think that...
So you're saying closing the doors doesn't help?
At 11 o'clock, closing the doors at 11 o'clock, you know, what happens at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock when it's so loud?
So when does the music start generally?
Whenever he plays, he just plays it so loud. Even the people in the restaurant, you can't even talk to anyone else. But I think he does that purposely so that he can increase his bar sales. Less conversation, the higher the bar sales. And, you know, it's a classic thing every restaurant does. I learned that from Richard Crick at the Summer House. But, you know, it's, we've, I just asked him just to lower the music, and he can't monitor his own. I have a decimal reader, and I was reading it, and it's over 70 at 9:00. In my house, inside, inside my house, it's over 70 coming from Nalu. So if he can say his decimals are correct, why can't I say mine? We do need the police to actually monitor it. You know, he hasn't been compliant until he's been forced to be compliant. He's had people on the Deck at 12:30, and I sent you all a video of that. You know, it's all nice and easy to say, "I'm going to do this. I'm going to do this." He has shown he has not done it. So I'm asking for stringent rules and repercussions for if he doesn't do that. And it's just, it's so silly. Why doesn't he just turn the music down a little bit? It doesn't need to be that loud.
All right. Any other questions, Fred?
Do you have any, what stringent rules might you be supportive of?
Yes. Personally, I think Reagan, I mean, I used to love this boy. I think he got bad advice from his architects.
Well, I don't know that we need to talk about personalities.
No, 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 no. Just saying, I think he got bad advice from his architects. I think the whole plan... Why doesn't he just enclose the whole thing?
That was my question.
Why doesn't he just enclose the whole thing?
Would enclosing that wall...
He wouldn't have to worry about rain. He could use it year-round. He wouldn't have to worry hurricanes and weather and everything else.
Are you talking about enclosing the Deck?
Yeah.
Well, there's a square footage issue there.
It's under 4,000.
So, I mean, what if we were to replace those sliding glass doors with a solid wall?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, then if you're not going to hear the band outside, it's going to...
I mean, the problem is, is that where the band, where the stage is now, it is going to be going straight out to the Hyatt. It is going to bounce off the Hyatt like it does horribly. It's going to go down to all the townhouses on the alley there, right behind them. My immediate neighbor on the other side, besides my lovely neighbor Sam, they can't sit outside and have dinner.
All right, listen, we asked a question. What conditions would you like to see? And other than that, we don't want to hear anything else. So thank you.
Okay. I think he would be, would do well for him to enclose the whole thing. It would be more financial benefit to him.
That's out of condition, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
My name's Tim McDonald. I live at 18 Dickinson Street. So my house is directly east, and there is no sound break between Nalu and me.
Okay.
You serve great food. There's a great bartender. I love Nalu's, but, and I've built a lot of houses and built a lot of stuff, that design is just wrong. The lady before was correct. The sound will hit the Hyatt and ricochet right to my house. There's no break. I can hear every word, some of the songs I like, so I'm okay, but the others I don't. So it's just a poor design. Sorry, lady was right. It should be enclosed. If you want to move the stage, move it inside the building. Think about that. People congregate around the music and dance, right? There's no space there. They're going to have to be outside of those sliding glass doors, which will not be closed. So I want to work with them somehow, but that's, it's just a bad design.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I see none in the room, so we're going to go online for anyone who wants to speak against it.
Looks like Larissa Sani, she unmuted.
All right, Larissa, three minutes, please. Can you state your...
Hi, my name's Larissa.
And address?
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, my name is Larissa Sahani, and I am at 17, D as in David, Van Dyke Street. And first and foremost, we, I've been coming to Dewey since 1986, and we've been an owner since 2000. We want all businesses to succeed. We want everyone to do well. The impact from Nalu on our home is tremendous. I keep hearing people say, "One individual neighbor." I don't understand what that reference is to. I can tell you all of Emerald Scholls, and I know few neighbors here are already online, greatly oppose any additional sound. I regret that over the years, I did not call the police. We lay awake in bed at night, pissed off. We've had tenants leave. I've had my own in-laws leave two days early because they couldn't sleep in our property on the backside of the house. We do not use our outdoor porch like we used to because of the sound of Nalu. It is a tremendous impact on our home. I bought on Van Dyke Street specifically to have a quieter, family-oriented, family opportunity for our home, and that has changed dramatically. Even our own tenants that have rented over the years have said, "We just, it's too loud at night. We can't sleep." So again, we want everyone to do well, but the noise down Van Dyke Street is considerable, and it is after 11:00 p.m. 9:00, 10:00 already annoying enough, but when it's at midnight and I can still hear the bass and I can tell you what song is playing, I don't need a decibel reader to tell me that there's a violation. It's too loud. I can't sleep on the front side of my house, let alone the backside of our home. And I really appreciate all the diligence that you all are doing into this matter. And we all want a great restaurant. We all want places to take our kids, but I don't care for owners from Rehoboth telling me that this is a positive when we on Van Dyke Street can't, you know, get any rest from it. I really appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else online to speak against the project?
Yes, Diane Hansen.
Hello, Diane?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, address, please.
I have lived full-time both on Dickinson and on Van Dyke, and was actually one of the commissioners that approved the original conditional use for Nalu. At that time, I remember addressing Reagan directly and said, "Reagan, I live in this street. I don't want a lot of low noise complaints from my neighbors. What are your plans for music?" And his answer was, "We would have..." And his answer was, "We would have a ukulele once in a while." That was his answer. Based on that, I was figuring no bands, and we did include in the ordinance that there was restrictions against amplified music. And at that time, I felt that the, the regulations were that there were going to be no amplified music. But within weeks, Reagan had bands in there. That really annoyed me quite a bit. I felt it was kind of dishonest to say at a conditional use hearing that you're only going to have a ukulele and then have bands in there within a few weeks. So that definitely annoys me. But the other thing is, I have heard from more people about this than I've heard about any other issue since the Hyatt issue back in 2007. So there has been at least 17 people that have stopped me on the street, stopped me on the beach, come up to me while I'm out to dinner, even to say how concerned they were about Nalu expanding. So I think you need to give some thought to the people that live in the area that are totally disturbed by this. And I, I know that you'll give a lot of consideration, but I think you need to give the people that live in the area some thorough consideration. There are many of us that just cannot get to sleep because of the noise from Nalu, and we don't want additional noise coming from it. The other thing is, I think no matter what comes out of this, that you really need to make sure they close those doors. It makes a big difference. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. All right. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak against? I don't see any, Kate?
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and, uh, close, close the public hearing.
Well, might we give, you know, without getting into any personalities or any factual matters, or does, does the applicant wish to make any remarks at this point on the record following the testimony that we've heard, particularly in opposition? You, you're not obligated to, but if, if you wish to be heard on it, I think it's only fair.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, for the...
Name again, yes.
Eleo Batista Jr., on behalf of Nalu. The process is always great to hear people speak. What I want to just remind the commission is this is planning and zoning, right? We have a lot of concerns about the noise, this, it's loud. You have an ordinance, we're going to follow it, right? Town manager's going to make sure we follow it. People complain about noise, okay, it's subjective. Tell them, right? If ordinance says, "The police come, they monitor." If there's a problem with that ordinance and how the sound is monitored and determined, that's not for this body to decide, right? But what you did...
Correct, correct. I definitely agree with that, and if there's a problem with the ordinance, that's another issue and needs to be dealt with.
Correct. But whatever, whatever the law is, they're going to follow it. You already had one give. They'll close the doors, right? 11 o'clock, sliding glass doors closed. We've already had one clarification, sliding glass doors equal windows. That's, you know, that's done too. To deny an application or have someone completely have to change their plan based on subjective comments, although important in the overall, I believe isn't the proper thing to do when you have the plan that was submitted. There is going to be a solid wall. There's been attempts by Mr. Derrickson to actually dampen the noise where he places the stage. At some point, you can only do what you can do, as long as you, you know, follow the law what's there. This commission can put reasonable conditions of approval on there, and we're fine with that. But we can only control what we can. If noise is bouncing off the hotel and coming down the street, how, you know, unless you have a parabolic mic, speaker somewhere, we just, you can't fix that, you know, unless there's a change. And that wouldn't be just in Nalu, it would be to everyone else on the street. So, you know, I think we're doing the best we can, and it's a solid plan, he's put a lot of money into it. In consideration, you've heard people speak in favor, and people speak in opposition. The opposition basically was, "It's loud." Okay, well, there's been no complaints. The police have not come and said, "Lower." If that happens, he's going to lower it. That's just the bottom line, right? If he's not shutting the doors, he not, he's going to shut the doors. So, you know, I, I think the town is doing the best thing they can, too.
I do have a question for you. Why is it that it's taken to this point for, for all of a sudden to, to close doors and react to people's concerns?
I, I don't, that, that question, I don't know. I, I do know, when I inquired, I said, "Have you, has the police ever given you a violation? Has the town ever given you a violation?" No. So, you know, if you're a business operator, if the, those in charge of enforcing laws and ordinances aren't telling me I'm doing anything wrong, okay, well, then I'm going to continue on running my business. Now, it's been an issue because this plan was put out, and like he said, "All right, we'll close it." It's not, you know, and you've heard, I forget the gentleman's name, so, listen, we should have been more clear on that, the commission, but it's clear now. It's really, really clear now.
So you're saying now that, that Ray would close the sliding glass doors now?
He said it.
From here on out?
Yeah. If it's a condition... We, we would put, we would put that as a condition.
Yeah, at 11 o'clock, the doors close.
Exactly, we will.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, he, he said it, you know, if, if the windows close at 11, well, now, that door's going to close at 11.
All right.
That was, I just wanted to put that out there.
Are they sliding the doors now? They're sliding doors now, right?
Yeah.
They face south, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's going to be closed at 11? Yes. Are you willing to do that now? In, in good faith? Okay, so, so, hold on. We've, we've got one person at the microphone, and there are a lot of people monitoring the, the hearing, so if we have questions for, for Mr. Derrickson, I think we need to get him to the microphone. Or you could put them to his attorney and see if his attorney can answer them first. Since there's a, I'll ask the attorney, if you feel, Derek, by all means. Since there's been such, this has come up with, with noise in the area, the, the current ordinance specifies windows, but I think we've kind of agreed here tonight that it, it, doors and windows was, was the intent. My question is, is the applicant willing to close those doors now at 11 o'clock?
That I'd have to, I'd have to put to him, but my question then would be, will that make any difference? Will it make any difference the way it is now, even if he does that? A, he's not obligated by, by the law, and he's never been told that. No one's ever come and said, "Do this." But we do know, and I'm pretty sure, after what's been, once there's an approval, if there is one, that's, that's going to happen. You're still going to get people complaining, right? Objectively, we're going to play the music unless the town manager and the police say, "Listen, we're standing here, look, this is too loud." You know, as opposed to, you know, someone three streets down, how do you, you know, we're going to comply with the law, right? You can't say to someone, "I think you're going to break the speed limit, so I don't want you to have that car." Whatever it is, we're going to comply. There's no, you know, that's just silly for me to say not, otherwise.
But you recognize that noise ordinances as an, as an attorney might be difficult to, to enforce.
Correct.
They're not, they're not easy to enforce.
But for 17 years, he hasn't had one. I mean, it, it, yes, I do.
Right. So that, so that the town would like to avoid engaging in enforcement activities if we could just avoid them altogether?
Sure, and that's, that's a, that's a business conversation that we can have, and, you know, you also want to avoid selective enforcement, right?
Absolutely.
So that's, you know, if he's going to close his, as everyone else, I mean...
So, Sam, let me ask a question. So Fred, you know, you asked that question, but, you know, Bill, have you been, have you ever issued a citation to this business?
So there's been no citations issued.
And have you monitored?
Since I've been here in the four summers and talking to Jim Deedee's, there's been one citation issued in the last 10 years. It was a civil citation. They talked about changing that when the, when the business owner asked for an appeal to a criminal citation, and they said, "No," so went back to a civil citation, and eventually it was dismissed. That was before I got here. Jim Deedee's would have some more information on that.
Right, so, so there's been no violations, you know, technically at this point, as far as on record, as far as enforcement by the Dewey Beach Police, and they have monitored, so we haven't really found a violation.
For Nalu, there's, no, no citation has been issued to Nalu in the last four years.
But we don't, we don't monitor generally. We respond, and correct me if I'm wrong, we respond to complaints of noise with some monitoring.
Right, but that's, but that's, that's an operational issue, and it's also, you know, that we've heard today, Fred, that there is a, a potential, you know, to look at that ordinance in another venue, but it's not, it's not for us to talk about. I mean, it is what it is, if the ordinance needs help.
Well, I mean, this, this group is charged with taking into account the information they received during the public hearing process.
Correct.
And all restaurants are considered conditional uses, which is a little bit of a different animal than a, you know, by right use, which enables you to take into consideration the location of the business in the imposition of reasonable, appropriate conditions, if any, are apparent in granting the, the permit or the change to the, to the permit.
I agree.
Thank you.
I have a question.
So, so where are we right here? Do we have any more questions of the applicant?
I have none. Do you have any?
No.
Mr. Redifer?
I do not know.
Okay, so typically, we don't field a lot of questions. I mean, this is an opportunity to express yourself, your opinion about the process as opposed to ask questions.
I can change the...
Pardon me?
I can change the...
Is it, is it just, just one simple question that we're going to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to? Because we don't want to get, we can't get into a back and forth, back and...
I think it's important.
Well...
All right, what's your question, ma'am? I'm sorry.
So she needs to, she needs to take the stand.
Yeah, we got, are you, are you done?
Why?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I have a question.
But he may or may not be done.
Name and address again, we already know, but, go ahead.
Jill Carr, 1300 Coastal Highway. Regarding not having any citations, I, you know, the police have been called, they have been asked, they're not in, they're too busy down at the Starboard, okay, usually nights. They don't respond to that. One night, I called and asked for them to please, because I want to make sure I'm not crazy. I said, "Would you please come and monitor this?" This is, you know, shaking my...
What's your question?
So, hold on, no. It's, I want to, I want to make sure I'm not crazy. I would like you to come and monitor it. And the police said to me, "That's not our job. That is the building inspector's job." I called Dawn the next day, and I said, "Dawn," I said, "This is what I got." She said, "Absolutely not. It's the police's job." I called back the police, I said, "We don't have readers. We don't do that." So the fact that he didn't get, wasn't read and didn't get a citation is not because the desire wasn't there, it's the, the police chose not to.
Okay, so I believe that was your testimony earlier. I heard you, you say that you have made efforts to communicate your complaints to the police, and you've not gotten...
And to, and to...
Right, right, yeah, but, but I think that, that point was made during your initial testimony. So I don't think we need to hear anymore from the applicant on, on that.
Okay. Thank you for being here. All right, we're going to close the public hearing at this point. You've already spoke once. Sir, you want to come up again?
Sure.
All right.
Well, do I get to come up again? And, uh, so, I think we need to, I mean, I think we need to bring this...
This is really short. I filed complaints twice last summer, never refused to come in.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
So, so that, I think that point has been made, that there have been some efforts to, to make complaints that have not resulted in enforcement actions. I think that's in the record.
Thank you, Fred.
I don't think anyone thinks that that didn't happen.
Thank you, Fred. At this point, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to have discussion amongst the commissioners. All right? Good? All right. Mark, you want to start?
Uh, yeah, just to make it clear, I've been coming down here since high school '77, and I bought in '98. So I have no bias toward any business down here, bar, I don't necessarily know Reagan. So having said that, I bought right on New Orleans Street. I'm right in the middle of everything. So I understand the people who are dealing with the noise. But I also understand that there's no violations, and apparently this all eats, all decodes and conditions. So I can't disagree with that. On the next hand, I've got about roughly 42 years' experience in construction. Anything I could ask would be, would be a possibility of looking into, let's say you've used metal studs, six-inch mat insulation, you use block walls, you use Phil Soundhouse, anything like that that would drive it. But then again, I'm not an architect. I'm not a, a, an engineer either. So maybe something you could consider. And that's pretty much all I have, and I think I have to agree that, you know, accept what you have here.
Thank you, Mark. Jimmy?
I have a question for Bill Zober. You guys do noise readings now?
We do. You've seen me out doing the noise readings.
And has any violations with you or above the noise level, or...
So the last two Saturday nights, I've been out at Nalu myself doing the reading. It is difficult to do it on Route 1 because of the traffic that goes by. There's all sorts of things that throw your meters off. But they were below the 665 that they should have been. I also did readings on Van Dyke Street in the area of 18 and 17, and they were at 5, 5-0. And then I did it down to the end of Van Dyke, down near Number 1, and it was actually 55, but that was the waves and the wind that picked up there. I also was over at North Beach, and I did my readings there also, because that's the other location that we sometimes get complaints about. And I did my readings there, and they were at 6. So I do go out and I do do readings. We have had people out to do the readings. And in the past, when we have had some readings that are high, we try to work with the business owner and go up them instead of, "Here's a ticket for $500." We would say, "Hey, listen, you're above the, the ordinance. You need to turn the music down, and if you don't, you will be issued a citation." We've worked very well with, that's worked very well with the business owners since I've been here. This is my fourth summer doing that. That's how we've been handling this. I also did a reading on Dickinson Street this past Saturday night, halfway up, and the reading was 48.7 on Dickinson Street, halfway up on the Ocean Block.
Thank you.
The news were after 10 o'clock.
I mean, I, I personally know Reagan, runs a great business. I see him closing those doors at 11 o'clock as actually keeping the sound inside, as opposed to now, it can just go out. I think he's not having any noise violations in the past. I get people call, but when you actually take a meter and get the number, it's subjective, like his attorney said about noise. I like that there would be a barrier wall between that corner now, as opposed to being like a closet, there's a wall that'll actually capture some of that sound. You know, I, I would suggest that closing those doors at 11 would be good. Other than that, I don't, I mean, as long as the ordinances are followed and it's within the building, you know.
Great, thank you, Jimmy.
All right, so Dave, Dave, if you can, start out with the fours and against, because we had a, a lot of public, the public like writing to the planning and zoning of the town, and we tried to capture everything. It, it got complex even today, people were emailing things, so if by some chance, I, I don't think it's wrong, I think our tally might, you know, is pretty much dead on, because Kate's been tracking it, we've been tracking the workers team, but Dave's been tracking but Dave's been tracking it for us. So I think you've got that here. So can you say about that and then go ahead with your comments?
Yeah, sure. So I think of the, I'll just count, do my counting, I've got more time here.
Dave's got a fancy spreadsheet. He's very organized.
Very fancy. So of the 23 responses we've got here, it is almost evenly split. I would say there are 12 against, and the balance is four. So you get a sense of how many against and how many fours we've gotten. I don't think it's appropriate to throw me all the names and locations.
Yeah.
No?
I don't think so. I mean, that really probably should have been raised during the public hearing process. Is there anything in the way of opposition that was not encompassed in the remarks that you've heard so far from others?
No, I can summarize them all with basically noise is the overriding concern through all of them. Is noise and will this change provide additional, will create additional noise? So I'll just summarize my comments. You know, I consider myself very business-friendly as we go through here, as well as residents. I think if the businesses do well, the town does well. But on this one, I'm concerned with the number of people that have come forth and complained about the noise, whether it's been officially reported or not. And so I'm concerned with, and all I can see is what's here is a sliding glass door as opposed to a solid door, some way of keeping the sound inside. I have a concern that we're going to exacerbate the problem. I appreciate the conditional change we're going to make, I really do. I think that goes a long way. I just don't see how I cannot recognize the concerns of everyone in the town, the people in the town. It's not one person. It's half of the response we get. So I'll go with that.
All right, thank you, Dave. So Jack, any comments from you at this point?
Yeah, thanks so much, everybody, for coming this evening, and I greatly appreciate the turnout we've gotten thus far in the newspapers, email to the town, to the commissioners, to the planning and zoning. This is what Dewey Beach is all about. It's bringing people together. It's bringing people to our community, whether we agree or not. I think it's hugely important for our community input. As P&amp;Z, our goal is to look at the application, to make sure that they're in compliance, to look at the past, and to look at the future. The future is very important for this town, because without understanding what the past is, we cannot grow forward. I look at what we've been provided. I look at the opposed. I look at the pro, and I see that this applicant has said multiple times that he is going to be in compliance. And if there are items that come up that need to be better in compliance, that he's willing to do that. And so for that, looking at what we have in front of us today, I am in support of it.
Thank you, Jack. I guess that leaves me. So anyway, I do enjoy the family atmosphere when I am able to go to Nalu. The big table helps us out a lot. My wife has 58 cousins, and I think I see one of them sort of like sitting in the audience. I don't know if you're a second or not, but anyway, they're all over the place. And we have lots of needs for big tables, so that really helps out. You know, even later at night, you know, it's you gotta be sitting at the table over there on the deck, and you have a bunch of people standing there, you know, spilling drinks on you and stuff. It's really nice. Like that gentleman said, that comes, Mr. Burton comes in and enjoys the atmosphere. I totally agree with that. I'm hoping that when a motion is made, and if it's not added, I'm going to make it myself. But I'm assuming one of these guys, one of the members of the commissioners will make that a condition to close the doors at 11, and the windows is already a condition, so.
I would just ask that you actually spell out windows, doors, and sliding doors. So there's no doubt what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, there's absolutely no doubt. The, I'm not sure if that's going to affect the front door, you know, because it's...
If that's separate, I would say the exception would be the front door, including the front door.
Because I think that's how, you know, they get in.
You've got to spell it out.
Yeah, all right. But anyway, I live across the street, and, you know, I'm a little bit sheltered because I'm closer to the water, but, you know, I haven't really heard any issues. But then again, I don't stay up that late anymore either. So, and then, you know, if there's issues with the noise ordinance, or there's some kind of noise, you know, situation needs to happen with some engineering or something in town, you know, that's another day, an issue for another day, which is another process. So we'll stick in our lane at planning and zoning, and I'm going to support this also if we can get that condition nailed down. At this point, Fred, I can call for a motion, is what I'm thinking. Somebody pretty much, you know, it'd be a recommendation to the town commissioners. Keep in mind, we don't, you know, approve this here. We make a recommendation based on the hearing and the facts that we heard today. So any of the commissioners want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
All right, what, to...
To go ahead and...
Make the recommendation of what we heard today, and with what condition do you want to add to the current conditions?
There's several conditions that I'm looking at, other than what everybody said. I guess we could look into the definition of a window and a door.
So you're saying so that at 11:00, at 11:00 PM, the sliding glass door and all windows need to be closed, other than the front door, so that they can have access, you know, folks coming in and out? Is that what your motion is? Fred, you capture that? All right.
I would second that.
And Jimmy's a second? Any discussion with the commissioners? Jack, any discussion? I don't have anything. All right, I see none. We're looking for a vote to make the recommendation as the commissioners had stated.
So when it comes time to vote, I would like to hear justification for your vote. So give some, you're going to vote individually and give reasons why you feel that you can support or do not support the motion.
All right, Mark?
Again, there's no violation, there are no recorded violations. It meets all the existing codes. And I can't see any reason to deny it, so I'm in agreement with their guess.
Jimmy?
I'm going to vote in favor for it as well. One, the past, there's no violations. There's, no ordinance has been in place since I was on the noise committee 10 years ago. I honestly think by closing those doors at 11 o'clock, it will keep the sound inside. So that's why I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Jimmy. On a date?
I'm going to vote no, because I feel like I need to support the people around the community that have a concern with the noise. Maybe it's, maybe it's not part of it here, but I can, in good conscience, agree with this based on the concerns they raise.
All right, thank you, Dave. I'm going to vote yes. I think there's a balance of nos and yeses, but that still doesn't make it right for the nos. I hope that we can improve the sound monitoring and sound engineering requirements in the town. There's a lot of ways to dampen sound. I hope that Nalu representatives take serious consideration into Mark's suggestions. It shouldn't cost much more to make a little thicker wall, like a block wall or something, some kind of, give some sound proofing in there, whatever they do to do that. It might just help a little bit. It's not going to, you know, help the sound up until 11 o'clock coming out. And the, you know, the other reasons that our planning and zoning commissioner said that meets the codes, the stage, you know, with, you know, the sliding glass door be shut at 11 o'clock, and we clarified that today. So I think that that's an advancement. So we took one step, you know, for the nos, took one step forward and one step back, because, you know, moving that stage, you know, does give it a little more directness. But now he's going to close the sliding glass doors, which they were not going to be closed in the past. So thank you for that concession. And now we look for Jack to go. I should have had you first, Jack, but go ahead.
It's okay. No, so I look at the commissioner's comments. Like I said, you know, just a few moments ago, the community input has been great. I'm going to vote yes for this. I think that with the community, or the commission consensus, amendment to the opportunity, I think it gives our town a great opportunity to move forward. Our job as commissioners on the P&amp;Z is to look at the applicant, to look at the past, and to hopefully plan for a better future. Our job is to put this now in front of the commission to let them do their job. And for that, that's why I will vote yes for this.
I do hope with this recommendation, as it goes forward, that Nalu representatives also talk to their entertainment venues, and crank it down a little bit, you know, because it does impede the conversation also. So even up till 11 o'clock, when I am still there. So, and I'd rather talk than really, you know, have the ability to talk. But so if you can just have a level of control, which I think you do, I mean, you're obviously in compliance with the ordinance, so that's great. Thank you very much for your time on this issue. I know it's controversial, it's a tough decision, and we're going to move to the next item at this point. Thank you.
You might want to pause for a minute.
This is a big case. It might be there's not an ordinance.
So the proposal will have the specifics in it, what they're going to give you to consider. And, you know, the process is, we're going to go through this again. So people, you know, we're going to hear from the problem, we may hear from the same people.
All right, all right, you guys, it's going to get started? All right, we're going to move on to item two, which is the green space public hearing regarding potential changes to green space requirements as recommended by Charter and Code Committee, Review Committee. Commission members will discuss and develop recommendations to be made to town council regarding potential amendments to the municipal code. So we're lucky, because we have ultra hard worker Dave Lyons here, and he will lead this conversation the next two, pretty much the next three items. So Dave, can you go through, you know, we've opened a public hearing on it, but we want to hear what the, any issues you want to fill in, and there's not much public people here, but we will ask public here in a minute.
So let's kind of give you a little background on this. So actually, the issue came first to Code and Charge, Charter and Code Review. And the issue that we're getting, especially in the north end, is that with all the building and development, the code is not sufficiently explicit on the way it is written today. And what we're trying to propose here today is some changes to the code that will better not only preserve the north end, but provide some more specificity around what is green space, how much is dedicated to green space, so that we can make it more enforceable, which is really what Code and Charge is all about. Commissioner Persinger was kind enough to summarize my comments into what you have in front of you here today. Basically, you know, green space provide for a range of environmental, social, and economic benefits. I don't have to tell everybody that. With climate change, air quality, water quality, what we're trying to do also is to preserve the character of the north end, is what we're trying to get to. So currently, Table 2, which contains all the bulk standards, it is written as 15% of the gross area lot dedicated to planting and beautification area. A minimum of 50% of this requirement shall be located in the front yard. So if you do the math, it's not very much ground that's actually dedicated to beautification, the way it's written today. We also don't define what is planting and beautification. What one person considers beautification could be very different from someone else's. Some people think stones are beautiful, some people think plants are beautiful. What we're trying to get here is common definitions and terms that everyone can understand it. So these are the changes that we're suggesting. First is to add a definition for green space. And green space is defined as vegetation such as grass, trees, shrubs, and other plants, which are permanently planted into the ground. One of the issues we have today is people put a planter, and then they move the planter. So we need to be more specific about what we're trying to get to. We're suggesting increasing the green space to 25%. And in the north district, we're also going to help further define it. That the front area shall be green space, except for the 20 by 18 parking space, and a 4 by 18 space for a walkway. The remaining areas shall be distributed, the remaining green space will be distributed between the side yard and backyards. Additionally, excuse me, driveways and walkways shall have borders that contain the materials for those surfaces within the driveway or walkway spaces. So if you choose to put stones down, you're going to have to have some way of containing those stones, so they don't drift into the parking lot, or the whole lot, or the whole front of the house becomes a parking lot. One other piece is that existing front yard space is covered with non-green space materials may remain. So if you have it in place today, it remains. But except for driveways and walkways, any renewal or replacement of these materials must convert to green space. So if someone comes in, just like if you made a major modification to your house, 50% of the value of the house, then you would have to go through and bring the house up to meet what the current code is, if you're in non-conformity. So that's basically the nature of it. I'll take any questions?
So I don't have any. Commissioners, I guess. Jack, you got any questions?
We should ask Jim and Dawn if they want to weigh in. Anybody from the town have any comments?
So I'll start off weighing in. So what we've found, and I think you'll hear this from the public comment also, is that people are just converting their whole front yards to driveways. And what's happening is you get five or six cars just lined up across the front. By town code, there's two driveway entrances at 10 feet, or you get one 20 foot. But what's happening is it's becoming a 50-foot driveway entrance all the way across. And people are afraid to park behind those cars that are parked in the yard for blocking them. So the people aren't parking there, even though legally, they can park there. So the town sees this as a real problem. We're hoping this will address that.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Fred.
So are these proposals just for the north end?
Yes.
Just for the NR?
Just for the NR district.
And that's it?
That's right.
Okay, is this the problem that you described primarily in the north end?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, anybody from the public want to talk that's here? Marcia?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For other places? Marcia Schick, I, as you know, have a couple properties on the north end, so this is pretty dear to me. I just want to, these are just some of the pictures I sent. This is kind of what's happening, if you want to pass them around.
Okay.
And it really is just a dump of 57 stone across the front yard. I'm also on the Code Committee, so we discussed this. And it's something we really wanted to have fast-tracked, because by the week, we're seeing more dumps of 57 stone across the front. Not only is it just ruining the character of the north end, but it's also creating the parking problems that Bill described, because you've got five cars parked straight across. And so you walk down these beautiful streets that our comp plan, I think you have to remember that our comp plan really did articulate and call out the north end as residential, having residential characteristics. I mean, we have provisions on how we can build our roofs, and this is really destructive. I think one of the things I'd like to add is, I just encourage you quickly to move this through. I think it's important to recognize the driveway, you know, if it's an exemption or the walkway in a driveway. But also, when you talk about borders, one of the other problems we have is you'll have a 20-foot or a 10-foot driveway, and people will pull in the driveway and then pull onto their grass. So they may have a small fence in the front of their other 30 feet, but they're still using the whole front yard. So I'm asking if we might consider, Dave, I know we maybe didn't talk about this, but we might consider that the border needs to be a raised border to some level. I mean, if you use a 6 by 6 or an 8 by 8 timberstone, you're going to have two to three inches raised. So I think our objective is that the driveway is defined and contained. Because if we don't define it, we just say grass is a driveway, because a lot of people say, well, our front yard is the driveway. And if we don't figure out a provision where, I think also by maybe articulating that cars are not permitted to park in the green space, we're still going to have the same problem if we don't drill it down to your raised border on your driveway must protrude three to four inches, or whatever you want it to be, so that when code enforcement goes, they can see that the driveway does have a delineation, a raised border. So now we have something that we can enforce. And if you're pulling in and you're going over the three-inch raised border and you're parking horizontally, you know, you're two spots, then horizontally across the whole front, we're still not having the green space, and we're still, we're still back to where we are. So it's not just the new green space, it is the parking lots in the front. So I think if we could tweak sort of a little bit of that to say that cars are not permitted to be parked in the green space area, or there's a raised border that delineate clearly the driveway, that the driveway is recognizable as a driveway. We do have probably 30% or more of houses that have no defined driveway, so they'll just pull in across the front of the grass. In fact, it was kind of funny, because our new house we built and landscaped and irrigated the front, and we probably have 50% green space. My first renters pulled right in through the beautiful grass and gardens and sort of said, well, everybody else does it up here. My first renters pulled right in through the beautiful grass and gardens and sort of said, well, everybody else does it up here. And it's really become unsightly, and it's very much against what the comp plan. And I think if we, I know it's been a while since we've done our comp plan, but the comp plan really did call out Rehoboth by the Sea, the North End, to be preserved, trees, residential, green space. And this is super destructive. I think the 50%, we are a 5,000 square foot lot, so, you know, 15 right now is very small. I think if we call out the, removing the pots, as you've said. But I really think we have to tighten up a little bit about not allowing parking vehicles. I think vehicles that we drive, obviously, we can park scooters or things like that. But I think getting the border and allowing no parking on green space would help. And it's really happening so fast, we want to get it done.
All right.
I thought we did put borders had to be in.
We did, I mean, driveways have borders, so I think maybe what we just want is sort of raised borders.
We did.
Yeah.
I remember saying.
Okay.
So anybody else want to talk?
I'd be like a room fairy now. I'm Cindy Suzie, I live on West Street, 113 West Street, and some of you have seen me here before. I've been talking about permeable and impermeable surfaces, et cetera.
Marcia, if you want your pictures, they're right there. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
You probably don't need those back, right?
No.
Yes, please.
Give it to Dave.
And sorry, I only made five copies. I wasn't expecting everybody to be here. I'm happy to email if you wanted to. So as some of you may be aware, I am a big proponent of creating more permeable space and more permeable driveways, front walkways, et cetera, throughout the town. But I also feel that we have not adequately enforced what is currently on the books in terms of the required natural spaces. As you will read, when Dale Cook was mayor in town in 2016, the town was completely staked with the 18-foot setbacks. And everybody was supposed to move any barriers, you know, shrubbery, excess lawn stuff, all the way back so that it actually created parking spaces and a defined driveway for each property. I walk my dog every day through our six blocks, and many people have ignored that. There is still a lot of that 18-foot setback that is taken up by shrubs, by weeds, by dead trees, et cetera. And so it would be nice if before we go to, you know, moving to do this, this, and this, why not actually enforce what has already been on the books for so many years? If a homeowner wants to put, and traditionally, the older cottages have always had that whole 50-foot wide. It isn't necessarily the newer houses that have kept the 50-foot wide parking lots. It is primarily the older cottages that still do that. There are five houses in the North End that have actually paved their entire 50-foot width, five of them. And nobody has gone and enforced taking out the easement for the public parking spaces. I have had information this past week where somebody parked in one of those paved spots in front of a house, and that homeowner came out and said, you got to move. He goes, why? It's the easement. He goes, it's my, it's my space. So if you're not going to enforce what you currently have on the books, I don't see a reason to add new things to that list. The way this proposal is written, it says total green space, total green space shall be 25% of the total lot in the North District. So if you take a 50 by 100-foot lot, 25% of that is 1,250 square feet. Of that lot, 432 square feet can be for the driveway or the walkway based upon 20 feet and the four-foot walkway.
Four, four what?
A four-foot wide walkway.
Right, right.
And then.
What was the square footage number that you gave?
432.
Thank you.
That leaves 1,318 square feet for a house to be on. The way this is written, that's what you're leaving. My house, which was built in 2016, and is actually much smaller than what most houses are that are being built today, has a footprint of 2,150. So the way this is written, you are forcing green space over a house. That's what you, that's what you have written here. So I just would ask, is that, is that the intent? And then to further go on and say that you want to have green grass growing down both sides of a house. Three houses on my block are completely covered with pine trees and trees and large shrubs. There is nothing that grows on those lots, nothing. So you're going to tell those people that they have to plant grass or some other shrub that isn't going to grow there? Again, I'm just, I'm thinking through like all the, you know, all the next steps. Another consideration is that most of the houses in the North End are not occupied 12 months, 365 days out of the year. So if you are, if you're insisting that grass be grown, and other, you know, I'm all for shrubs and plants and, you know, I have grass in my front yard, but I live here full-time, so I'm able to take care of it. But if you're now requiring that some other green, green meaning grass, is supposed to be planted, how are they going to take care of that nine months out of the year? Or even six months out of the year? What is going to happen? And finally, the way this is written, I have river rock as part, as my driveway and the parking easement. So you're telling me that if I have to replenish the rocks in the easement area because of all of the construction that has taken place on my, on my street so far in the past three years, and trucks have driven on it, and stones are pressed down, and now I have to replenish it, that I can't do that, that I am now going to have to remove those rocks, bring in field dirt, bring in grass, or some other plant that cars can now park on? And that's what, but that is what you have asked in this, in this thing.
So I think it would be helpful to know, you're referring to the 18-foot setback?
Correct.
Yeah, it's not a setback.
It's not a setback. So I think we should, the first, and Dawn, I'm going to hope that I've got this right here. But the first 10 feet of your, of the lot is city. That is the, that is the common area that you are not supposed to put things on unless you have some kind of, you have to get approval from the city. That is parking area for the public, right? That is, that is parking area. We're not suggesting anything in that, we're not saying that that has to be green or anything like that. It's not our intention here.
That's not the way it reads.
Well, what we're talking about is that your lot actually starts, the 18-foot setback that you're referring to, starts from that border back to the foundation of your house. That's the area that we're talking about trying to make green.
Okay, well, then I think it needs to be clarified as that. That's all I'm saying. And frankly, I have, half of my front yard is grass, and half of it, because I haven't ever been able to grow grass on the other side, is river rock so that it's easy to take beach chairs back and forth, it's easy to bring the wagons back and forth to store them after the end of the beach day. You're telling me that I'm now going to have to remove all of that rock if I ever want to replace it, okay, or replenish it? I'm going to have to remove that.
I think what we spoke to here, though, was front, we did not, we said the remainder can be around the side.
Well, the remaining green space shall be distributed between two side yard and backyards.
Right, but we didn't say where, that what's, because we.
Well, and I remember, though, at the Code, at the Code Committee meeting, it said we're going to table side yards until a further date. So I'm putting it on the table now that I'm in favor of that.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you for listening.
That's a lot of good research, thank you.
Are greens, does green space not include what, I think what the city of Rehoboth refers to as natural areas? I mean, like, natural areas might be areas that are perpetually covered in pine needles because in certain parts of Rehoboth, those are, they're not green.
Yeah, you can't grow grass, right.
So what, is our intention to allow that or not?
So the idea here was not to allow any new building in the North End, to just put stone or pavers all the way across the front so it looks like one big driveway, and people take advantage of that. That's, as the town manager, we have a real hard problem when people are parking six cars across the front, and we have to go in and try to, well, your driveway's over here, your 20-foot driveway's here, but you've got on your 50-foot lot, six cars parked all the way across the front. If people don't know that they can park behind those perpendicular cars, they can legally park parallel. We've looked at options, we've looked at putting split rail fences up. But I can tell you, people are not going to want split rail fences in the front of their yard, you know, marking where our right-of-way is, right, where we can park, and then where their property starts. It'll be costly, and people aren't going to want that in front of their homes. And this is just going forward. The way we work driveways, and Dawn and Jim, you can, you can correct me on this. If it's a repair, we let them go ahead and repair it the way it is right now. If it's concrete, and it's just a repair, we let them repair it. If it's asphalt, we let them repair it. If they're talking about replacing the whole thing, then they have to come into what the new code is. Is that correct, Jim or Dawn?
That's correct.
I hope that cleared some things up.
So our code, well, I was kind of surprised to find, in the context of some other question we were looking up months ago, our code does not permit any impervious coverage other than what we recently exempted out, which is an area for pools, an impervious coverage that is the result of a, you know, permitted building or structure. So you can't have like a patio, as I understand it, unless it's, unless it's pervious. So are these stones, river rock stones considered pervious? Because if they're impervious, they might not be permitted. I'm asking Jim or Dawn.
Like, the stone's not, but the, but because they're stones.
Is that because there's no subsurface, and if they were much smaller, might they be considered impervious? If there were pebbles, no? Well, certain jurisdictions would, would, would consider them to be impervious if they're compacted, and if the stones are of a certain size. Even clamshells in Lewis until recently were considered. Yeah, and it was very controversial. I mean, I'm not saying it was a good thing or not, but so I'm, I'm.
Dawn, I think you could explain that.
What I have, what I've found in talking with some of the other municipalities to the north and to the south of us is the fact that in Rehoboth Beach, they do things according to lot coverage by impervious surfaces. So they only allow a certain amount of impervious lot coverage. Everything else must be natural coverage when it comes to plantings, grass, vegetation. They do not allow pine shats or pine straw according to the building official there because it does create a mat that will, over time, or a certain amount of time with rain, become impervious and also clog up the storm drains. So as a result, they don't allow that. But they look at amount of an impervious surface and lot coverage. And that impervious surface is the house. It could be a patio, a shed, things of that nature, and they only allow a certain amount. And if you've maxed out your peak amount, you've maxed out your peak amount. When I talked with Bethany, and I can't remember as much, they have ordinances that, from off the top of my head, seem to appear to be the same kind of ordinances. They do not do pervious surface, patio, impervious, and so forth, don't define that. So as a result, there's not apparently as much controversy like what we have here. What I'm finding is that a lot of our residents want to do stone to be able to put in a walkway, something, a driveway. However, the product that they want to mix that stone with is not a permeable substance. And so unless it is actually installed correctly, because a lot of times they want to use crushed stone and so forth, anything with stone dust will eventually turn to an impervious surface. So how things are installed, products that are used, whether they're considered natural, such as natural shredded mulch, natural grass, natural vegetation, we may need to address it in that direction. My question to you folks would have also been, and it was somewhat brought up, if a planting bed, they've got, let's say, an 18-foot planting bed, and they've got six plants or shrubs in there, is it considered a full 18-foot width if they don't use natural mulch? Instead, they use stone, the river rock and whatever? That's a question that I would have in enforcement. What do I do? How do I look at that? Is that going to be allowed? So that was just one question. Hopefully, I helped with that long dissertation about Rehoboth Beach and the natural plantings. But that's what the building official told me.
Thank you, Dawn. Very, very thorough. All right, so Dave, what do you think here? You want to either go back to the drawing board, or you want to work on it a little more?
Can we have another comment? I just want to clarify something. Marcia Schick, I think we got a little confused and off track with the discussion of the setback, the county town land. And I think we have to remember that 10, 12, some streets are 18 feet, nothing to do with what we're asking for, nothing. And the history of going back to Dale Cook at those meetings, when that town went out and paid for all those surveys to, you know, stake off that county or town land. Three streets are, I believe, town, the rest are county, those three streets are on our North End. The coup essentially that came from that attempt was so crazy because in my own opinion, the result would be creating something we're trying not to create. So we have a North End that's very casual and residential, and yes, there are plantings that encroach into some of that. They've been doing it for 20, 40, 60 years, long before we were incorporated. And what they discovered was to go through and ask people to clear that out was going to create more disruption, lawsuits. And, and it's also just going to create a very barren, desolate-looking 12 feet down each street. You've got your, you've got your street, and then you've got 12 feet where we have literally come in in clear cut. And I would never want to see that. I think it would destroy the North End. So I want to just stay focused on what we're asking for. I don't think we need to go back to the drawing board. We have been on this for months and months and months. And we really need your support here. We'd like to get it to the commission where we can have a bigger public hearing, maybe more people. I'm glad you came, but we're the only two. You know, let's get it somewhere like that. We really need to stop the dumping of 57 stone and anything else across the whole front and creating parking lots. And we need a more clearly defined, tightened-up code to do that. Designated driveway, what does that mean? Here's what it looks like. You cannot park on the green space. Green space, we can go through at the next public hearing and hone that in. But we, this is really an emergency measure. If you walk up and down the North End, it's happening every week. If you walk up and down the, the north end, it's happening every week. And I just really ask you to support it. You know it's not a final decision. I'm just asking to support moving it through.
Thank you.
So, my suggestion would be, if we, as a committee here, can review these recommended changes.
Hold on, Dave. Let's just see. Anybody else in the public want to talk on this?
I don't have all the information yet, so I can't.
All right, so, we're going to close the public hearing. And anybody online want to talk? Kate, do you see anybody online? Okay. So, I can't really read that. All right, so, close the public hearing. You're on.
All right. So, my suggestion would be to take, to, as a committee, to review these recommended changes. And if we're in agreement with them, we don't actually have an ordinance, so we would need to actually have Fred construct an ordinance that the commissioners would actually have to approve. So, what I think, in terms of the spirit of moving it along, if we could, is if we could agree that these changes are, make sense, and that we can support them as a committee, ask Fred to draft up an ordinance, and when the commissioners consider them in the next meeting, that they could approve or disapprove or refine our recommendations accordingly.
So, I, I think, you know, where we're at, you know, as, when you say committee, we're the planning and zoning commission. So, the planning and zoning commission would be able to, you, one of you guys, like, probably you, make a, make a recommended, a conceptual recommended ordinance that you and Fred would work on. And we, as the planning and zoning commission, in concert with the documents that you have there, what we just discussed, we would make a motion that says, in concert with whatever you propose on this, which I think I agree with Marcia and some of the comments, we need to do something to prevent what's happening, but we want a second bite to apple and make sure we don't make a mistake on square footage and things. So, an ordinance that you work on in concert with what you, what we had already read and came to the table with today, and you work on that. You know, I could review it, you know, as a second P and Z. We've done that before, where it's second P and Z. And then, you know, Fred would take it to, and post it for the town commissioners to hear it. So, that process, Fred, if that's not a problem, because I thought we've done that in the past, because we didn't have an ordinance one, a couple of times along the way, then if you want to propose something, or anybody else want to, if you guys agree with that, Jimmy or Mark or Jack disagree, let it, let me know. And then, Dave, if you want to make a motion, maybe you can get a second on it, and we can discuss it.
Okay. All right, all right. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we move these recommended changes forward. We ask Fred to actually construct an ordinance that can be reviewed and then presented to the commissioners in the next monthly meeting.
In concert with the document that was provided with us.
Yes.
About six bullet points.
Exactly, with these six bullet points.
Yep. Can you just read them?
Sure. The recommended date, recommended changes are at a definition for green space. Green space is defined as vegetation such as grass, trees, shrubs, and other plants which are permanently planted into the ground. Total green space shall be 25% of the total lot area in the NR district. For the NR district, all front yard area shall be green space, except for a 20-by-18 space for a driveway and a 4-by-18 space for a walkway. The remaining green space area shall be distributed between the two side yard and backyard areas. Driveway and walkway shall have a raised border that contain the materials for those surfaces within the driveway and walkway spaces. The last bullet, existing front yard space is covered with non-green space materials may remain, but except for driveways and walkways, any renewal or replacement of these materials must convert these areas to green space.
Would, during the, when you're working on it, can you put some words in there and say something about shall compare to the other ordinances or other rules, like in Table 2, I think is where we put square footage of houses?
Yeah, that's where the change would be. The change would actually be in Table 2.
So, make sure, can you add some words, maybe address conflicts?
Sure.
Because I think that's what you were looking at.
Yeah, because right now, it says 25% of the total lot.
Yeah, yeah. So, they'll look at that. They'll look at that, and then it'll be at the commissioners' meeting, and we'll go from there.
That doesn't make sense.
So, we need a second, if anybody has a second on that?
A second.
The discussion we sort of slid in and.
So, question, there's a quoted provision here from Table 2, saying a minimum of 15% of the gross lot area shall be dedicated to planning and beautification. So, is it our intention that the words "green space" will be substituted for "planning and beautification" in that?
Yes.
Yes.
And that percentage that's in the NR would change from 15 to 25. And then, we'd have to find a place to put these other definitions for the driveways and the walkways.
All right, so, any discussion with the planning and zoning commissioners? And Jack first. You know, we're, we're like in the motion stage, Dawn, but we should take input. Can we take input from Dawn, the vote official?
Of course.
All right, Dawn, or whoever wants to talk.
If you have a specific question.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. I noticed that we didn't specifically mention potted plants. I know it specifies having plants that are permanently planted in the ground, but it's very conceivable, potted plants can have an open bottom and they can be there. So, let's, I'd like to make sure that that is something that we all want to be included, that they're not to be permitted in as green space, no matter what they put it in.
So, the pot, the, so, we could include some clarifying language that potted vegetation or potted plants shall not qualify or be.
Right. Shall not qualify in meeting the green space requirement.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jim. Dawn?
I'm looking at this from an enforcement issue of being able to follow what you folks recommend or what the commissioners recommend. And when it comes to bullet point number two, about the total green space shall be 25% of the lot area, my question has to do with, what if there's an existing home there that has been built after this particular ordinance would possibly go through, and they want to add a pool later on? They want to add an addition in the rear yard? Does that 25% of the green space with our example of the 5,000-square-foot lot, do I have to take that into account before I can approve an addition, approve a pool, something of that nature? So, I have a question concerning that, bullet point two. And now, bullet point three talks about, in the front yard, it shall have a 20-by-18 space for a driveway and a 14, a 4-by-18 space for a walkway. Our code allows, the current code allows, two 10-foot-wide driveways with a 20-foot gap in between. And since the code and charter meeting a few weeks ago and so forth, I've had two residents who want to put in two 10s with a 20-foot gap in between, but it be a curved driveway, go in one side and out the other. How can this be applied, or would that be allowed or applied in this case? Or, our code does talk about a corner lot, that it can have a 10-foot wide on one side from one street and a 10-foot wide driveway entrance from another. How, how would those existing codes be in compliance, or how can we get them in compliance with the wording that we have here? I'm simply looking at it from an enforcement issue.
Well, it's not uncommon for existing properties to, to not comply with ordinances that get adopted in the future. So, that's a, that's something you run into often. So, a, a property that doesn't comply with a new standard that, that gets adopted by council is considered legal non-conforming. And then, in the event that they wish to expand or alter or, or make, you know, additions or add a pool, the standard would apply to them, which might prevent them from doing what they want to do, which they could have done before the ordinance was passed, perhaps. And their relief would be possibly to go to the Board of Adjustment and say, well, we built, we, we built in a manner that was totally legal. It wasn't our intention to, to foreclose the opportunity to install a pool as well and see how that flies. I mean, that's, that's what I would have to say about that.
Great input. Thank you, Dawn. We're in discussion phase. We have a, a motion with a second, I think, on the table. And just point, you know, if you want to add anything to that, this is the opportunity to take a look at that while you're doing that, or you can keep your motion and vote on it.
I'm just going to keep the motion the way it is and vote, and then, that would be my suggestion. Just go ahead, let's move this forward. And then, as we draft the ordinance, if there's something else, we can always alter it at the, and the commissioners are going to get another credit this anyway.
All right, so, let's look for a vote. Jack, online? We'll go with you first, since we keep forgetting about you.
That's okay. My question to our councilor, should I recuse myself because of the connections of our family and the, and our district, or would you feel okay to vote on this?
No, I don't see that as a conflict, that the law would apply to you. So, I mean, if, if you feel like, if you feel like you can't do your duty in, in, in making this recommendation or, or voting on something, then perhaps you should recuse yourself. But you don't have a, I don't see it as an actual conflict.
Then, then, you know, I, to be on the safe side, I will just refuse myself, just because of my concerns of what I stand.
All right, Jack, thank you. So, Mark?
I'm, yeah, I'm moving forward.
Jimmy?
Moving forward, yes.
Dave, you're, I assume you're saying, and I'll vote yes also for all the reasons that are in the bullets that we talked about already.
So, I'm going to draft an ordinance as soon as possible, so that it could possibly end up on the next agenda for the commissioners. I don't know if that's, if that's possible or not, because they, they're going to have to hold a public hearing as well, and that needs to be noticed.
It's like minimum 14 days, et cetera, yeah.
Yeah, but it takes longer than that to get something noticed.
It doesn't get back to the current charter, does it?
No.
No, no.
Can I ask a question?
We're pretty much done, but yeah, go ahead.
So, when you say green space, does it have to be green?
So, the way we've defined it, this is right now.
It's a definition.
Because I have, I have a yard where things don't grow. There is dirt. It's not going to be green unless there's weeds.
So, we're done, we're done with the issue, but if you can, is there a quick answer for her on this?
No, but I certainly will make sure it's inserted into the, into the final ordinance.
Oh, okay, there you go.
It's, it's, I, I would not be able to grow anything.
All right, yeah, so, he'll, he'll define it, and there'll be a posting for the commissioners' meeting, and if you're concerned, you'll see what's posted, and you come to the meeting and.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all right. Good, all right. You good?
Yeah, that's good.
All right, we're moving on to action item three, which is public hearing three. It is regarding potential change to downspout runoff water requirements as recommended by Charter and Code Review Committee. Commission members will discuss and develop recommendations to be made to the town council regarding potential amendments to municipal code. And I think we have a draft ordinance. We came in, crossed the finish line a little late, and I was going to defer to Dave again, since his committee had done all the hard work on this.
So, actually, inserting a new section into Section 185, basically related to downspouts and stormwater runoff. Let me just give you a little bit of background. Once again, this originally came out of code enforcement as a result of a complaint that one of the townspeople had regarding stormwater runoff coming directly into their lot. And so, the background is obviously, construction problems affected stormwater runoff, especially when any of these activities result in greater lot coverage and smaller areas for distributing the water. We all know this, because we build bigger houses, we have a problem of where does the water go? So, there is some wording today in Section 18588 that requires stormwater management plan for development or any lot that shows post-development runoff. But that doesn't seem to provide enough for coverage. So, what we're suggesting is that we establish a requirement for gutters and downspouts, because there isn't anything there today, I think, that calls for gutters and downspouts in our code. And then, the discharge of water, we have, and I'm going to go with this alternate language, is that stormwater runoff on any lot shall be contained within the boundaries of that lot. The discharge point for stormwater must be at least four feet from the property line or greater distance, if necessary, to contain the stormwater. So, basically, we hear this lot, people building, the water's going onto their neighbor's yard. So, what we're trying to do here is give enforcement something, and they can go to the homeowner and say, that's not legal.
So, what was happening was somebody was running a flexible tube off their downspout and running it right onto their neighbor's property, and it was just running right on their property. So, we're asking here that that be at least four feet back from the property line.
All right, thank you, Bill. Any, any comments from the commissioners?
So, so, if I could, the, the third standard, first of all, the $15,000 issue for renovations was just totally arbitrary on my part. I, I don't know where to set that, or, or actually, didn't have any direction either. So, it's up, it's up to this group to, maybe with Dawn's input, to decide if that's, you know, in the right ballpark. But subsection C is really the tricky one, because, you know, we do, there, there are differences between elevations of properties along the same street. And you can have a scenario where the course of water has run for decades in, you know, from high to low. And there was a lot of controversy over some grading issues that occurred on Lake Girar in the city of Rehoboth. It got a whole lot of attention in the Cape Codette, and there were several Board of Adjustment hearings that involved that. And while it is neighborly of us all that if we're, if we're making improvements to our property, that we capture the water that we're shedding from our lots, if you've got water that's coming four lots away down to you and is continuing what otherwise continue, and now this ordinance is, is saying you've got to stop it from leaving your property at your lot, it becomes, it's an unworkable issue. So, we have to build in some kind of recognition that, that flows of stormwater that historically go from one point to another point are not, don't, you know, and over your lot, don't constitute some kind of a violation, that you've got to capture all that water and keep it from going downhill. So, it's, this is a difficult problem. And we have this Sussex County Conservation District that regulates stormwater, but they only, they only do it for like 15,000-square-foot properties. So, if you have developments all over Sussex County in which the, the terrain is altered and a lot more impervious surface is added, and they're not going to investigate complaints from people who say that, well, they just put that house in, and now this water is heading over here. If there's evidence that the water has been traveling in that direction for decades and is always going to travel in that direction.
But Fred, in, in this specific case, we've got somebody who, who actually took their drains by water, a piece of corugated tube, and ran it right to their, to the edge of their.
Okay, well, that's dealt with, that's dealt with in A and B. That's dealt with in A and B.
So, I, I guess that the problem I have is, so, if you don't discharge stormwater on your property, does that mean it can go to the street? Is that, is that, because we don't have storm drains in the north end. So, that's what we have now. We have water piling up on the, on the edge of the road in the north end.
I mean, yeah, yeah. My, my comment is not with regard to subsections A and B. It's just with C.
Let's see. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, you're creating an unrealistic situation. I mean, you know, the, if the water has been running off, if you had a cottage and it, you know, drains off and runs down the street, you know, you've got to allow that. You can't say that all your stormwater is going to stay on your site. I mean, it's, it's, you know.
I'll tell you, Bethany Code has specific provisions that say you have to.
Really?
Yeah, I'm telling you, Bethany does. I mean, they say that the water is, you can either put it in a, a holding tank, or, Marcia, we, we talked about it in the code and charter, but they actually talked in their code about it actually has to be distributed on your, on your property.
The way you typically grade a site, you, you grade it, and it goes out into the storm system, but there's not a storm system there. So, here, you grade it, goes off into the street. I think what the problem you've got right now is you've got some individuals that feel that they can run that pipe, you know, right to the edge, and it's like dump it right on the property line. So, just say you can't do that, and you've got that problem solved. But this one, this C, you might want to look into that a little more.
So, I think Fred, you suggested we don't, we, we cut C?
I, I think we at least flag it for attention by the, by the commissioners.
Yeah, I would just cut it because, and, and, or, and research, send it back to your committee and research. Do some. Do some benchmarking. Call the Conservation District, look at other codes, because, you know, most...
But we're trying to solve this very specific problem here, and I don't wanna go back and be lost in committee on what we're trying to solve the first two things, which is really having people use gutters and downspouts and not let water flow into their neighbor's yards. That is the ultimate problem we're trying to solve here. I mean, if everybody has a problem with C, we can cut C, but it was... We cut C. I mean, B just says, you know, it's gotta be not less than four feet from the nearest boundary line.
Yeah, then you won't have a direct. I mean, that, I mean, four feet seems, you know, four feet's not that much. I mean, it's gonna be like...
Yeah, but why would we even allow four feet?
Yeah.
I mean, when that water comes down that downspout, if it runs, let's say, 10 feet before it hits that four-foot boundary, that's 10 foot of ground. It's not absorbing water. Comes out of that downspout, it hits splash block, so you're gonna end up on a hole next to your house or whatever, and then it starts permeating. This place is a sponge. Doing beach is basically a sponge. We have, the only thing that's permeable in doing beach is sand. You can put a stone down. It's gonna fill up with sand and dirt. It's gonna be impervious. You can put fabric underneath. Fabric's gonna fill up with sand. I personally did my driveway totally different. I went down two feet, put stone in there, and got to the sand. It was granular, so that when that went through there, eventually someday it's gonna fill up. But, right now, I don't get any water in my driveway. Water comes off the side of my house. It hits a two-foot trench. It's got stone in it. That trench ties right into my driveway. Doesn't put it on anybody else's property. Keeps it in mine. Now, I know that water fills up, because I have a tube down there, and I can tell how high that water comes up.
Yeah, so that's what you're looking for, maybe, something like that.
Basically, a trench, but again, it has nowhere to go. If there was something in the street, you know, I can't tie, I wouldn't be able to tie it in the sort, because it's rained for a while. But at least it manages that part of the problem. Now, if somebody builds next to you, and they decide to fill their lot in, they're gonna force water on the side neighbors and our back neighbor, and they shouldn't be able to do that. They shouldn't create a problem for them. They should have to do something with that water, and I see it happening more and more.
So, you're saying keep C, but say, and see what happens. See if the engineers can come up with a way to do like you did at your house. Is that what you're saying?
I don't wanna say that, because it's expensive. I don't wanna say you have to do it this way.
Is anybody hurting for money and doing?
I'm just, I don't, I don't wanna, all I wanna say...
Send Zed. I'll rescind that statement.
Permeability and doing beach is the sand. If the water goes through the sand, it disappears.
I'm sorry. Hold on, Gary. Mark, I didn't hear what you said.
That's like I said, the water, like I said, I came here, I started coming down here in '77, it was a lot of sand. The water, we didn't have too much blacktop. We didn't have much solid coverage, and that's one of the other big problems. You have big parking lots now, whatever else. Water's no place to get out, and it takes time for it to leave. We've broken out the issues we've had on Baird and the Downland Reef Street. And of course, we have, everybody's gonna say climate change and all that, yeah, I know.
So, I know, you know, we're kinda in the same business in some ways, but do you wanna keep... Are you proposing we keep C?
I'd propose to keep, well, I would say we only need to get the four feet from the property lot. Why? Why should we have water all the way there? Let it start perking through this oil, rain, so leaves the house.
So, it should be a number, you would recommend a number greater than four?
Not less than four feet away from the house. Like, you don't wanna go, like, you're saying four feet from the property line. He's saying closer to the house, like...
Well, the way it's written is, "Shall not be less than four feet." It can be less. It can be right... It can be right off the downspout, if that's what you want.
He's saying, find it like that.
So, if you say...
Still, I still think it should just, as soon as it comes out of that downspout, it should just splash block. That's it. Or, okay, let's stay a downspout, or something short, because that's, you know, you don't want to wear your foundation, and y'all know that, because that's what we're trying to do, push it away. So, you gotta have something to push away. Splash blocks are old school. They work, but again, if you...
Typical four-foot, how long a splash box?
I mean, that's what I say, if we say not less than four feet, it can be anything, anything closer than that, if that's what you want. But we wanna make sure that someone didn't go closer than that. Once again, we're trying to get to keep the water off your neighbor's property. That's what we're trying to get to here. We're trying to give code enforcement something to be able to do that.
I think you can go back and change it if what you do doesn't work, and you have some problems, you know, have it, see if the commissioners will send it back to us. I mean, but I absolutely, you know, like the concept we were trying to do, because I surely wouldn't wanna be the guy, our property owner next door, with the dudes like running right up to the property line. That's not too neighbor.
Yeah, just to be real clear, I mean, it went from Code and Charter to the commissioners. Gary, you know, kinda presented the ideas of the Code and Charter. They, any concerns, they referred it to us. So, for our input, you know, go back to them for their final review and approval of any kind of ordinance that we've proposed. So, there's another look at this, for sure.
The problem that I was talking about would arise in the context of somebody recontoring their property to prevent water from coming off of the neighbor's property the way that it maybe has historically. So, it starts to pond on the neighbor's property instead of traveling the normal course, and that's the...
Right. Good discussion. Commissioner?
Commissioner Persinger?
We're still in the public hearing. I didn't close the public hearing yet.
Gary Persinger, Commissioner. The intent of C was not to say that any stormwater is on your property has to be contained within your property. It was really a situation where if you build a new house or you add something to your house where you're actually increasing the impervious surface area on your lot, you need to have gutters and downspouts, and any water that runs from those gutters and downspouts has to be contained within your property. That's the idea. So, the four-foot distance was really arbitrary, and we added, at least I added, and didn't get any objection to it, the notion that if four feet turns out not to be an appropriate distance, you need to bring it back toward the house so that you can assure that, ensure that that stormwater that's coming out of those gutters and downspouts is contained within your property. So, that's one point. Second point, there is a section within our code that says if you have a new construction project, I'm not sure the exact context, and I think it's somewhere around 18588. There's a paragraph on stormwater management. It basically says, if you're gonna do something, a new project like this, you need to develop some sort of a plan to demonstrate that you're in essence not making the stormwater runoff any worse. And how you do that may be very complicated, but it is a part of our code. And then, the third point is that in discussing the proposed changes that we're talking about here, this is among the town commissioners, there was a suggestion that we make this not only prospective, but also correct any existing problems as well. So, if there is a situation where someone is running water out of a gutter and downspout and went to your property, there is an opportunity to get that person to correct that problem. That was suggested. It wasn't actually in writing anywhere, but it was part of the discussion at the meeting last week.
Great. Thank you.
So, I would think with respect to the last thing, that somebody, like a tube you put at the end of your downspout doesn't constitute some kind of vested property right that can't be regulated out of existence. In other words, I don't think you can say, "Well, I spent, you know, $18 installing this, and now you've changed the law on me, and you can't make me comply." I don't think that's a winning argument when it comes to, you know, directing water out of a downspout. So, I think it would be retroactive and could be enforced retroactively. I'm pleased to hear what I heard about the stormwater runoff being really a reference to water that's carried through the downspout and the gutters, as opposed to just generally. So, I think there's some language there that I can add. And then, Section 88 of 185, I, reading that, that looks like language that is meant to apply to, like, the construction of a residential subdivision, and it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that, right. So, that's why I didn't put these changes there, because there's some language that appears a little bit later that refers to fences and refers to other things, and I thought it just was better there. But I think we borrowed that other language from regulations that apply to the construction of a major subdivision, which we don't have really here in this jurisdiction.
Well, Dave, so we're in a public hearing, I think, still. I think we close it?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, at this point, I guess.
We're gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna defer to you to see how you want to move forward. You wanna take it back and work on, or make a motion?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, that we recommend the adoption of the ordinance, and that we ask Fred to make some of the subsequent changes we discussed, so we can go to commissioners' review.
Alright, looking for a second. Jimmy with the second. Any discussion with the commissioners? I see none. Jack, I see none. Any, no comments, Jack?
No, I do not.
Alright. I guess we're at the vote stage, so, Jack, since you're on, are you in favor of the motion that Dave just made, Jimmy seconded?
Yes.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
Jimmy?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Mike Harmon, yes.
So, for the time being, $15,000 is gonna stay in the ordinance, and we're gonna add some language regarding this particular type of stormwater runoff.
The $15,000 can be revised if you find better information, because I think you said you picked that number a little bit arbitrarily.
Well, it's always gonna be, you know, there's gonna be some sense of arbitrariness to it, but it'll be up to the commissioners. You all don't feel strongly about that, are you?
Right, no. I mean, one who would have an opinion would be Dawn or Jim, but to me, I don't know why you'd have... I mean, would you not have a structure on an accessory building? You not have gutters on accessory building? I mean, that's the only thing I can think of. It would be less than $15,000.
So, actually, like, Louis, a lot of these old houses don't have gutters at all. And I think in some jurisdictions, they're actually prohibited.
The accessory building, I'm familiar with, and Dave did not have gutters, but...
So, I would leave the number there, and I would, and it's worth a comment, a question of Dawn and Jim, and see if they have an adjustment they wanna make.
And then, four feet was your number, and that's where we're gonna leave it? Four feet? I mean, it could be increased to five feet?
Well, yeah, the commissioners see something. I'm fine with that. Alright.
Alright, looks like that passed. The final item, I'll introduce it, and we can decide whether we wanna keep moving forward, because it's getting a little late. But, alright, so... Is there anyone? I don't see anybody here who's really, you guys aren't really, well, let's, let me introduce it. So, the next item is Discuss Positively, Recommend Town Council Potential Increase in the Town Free Board Requirements. Now, we do have an ordinance, and we posted some information. So, you know, we're basically going from one foot, I think, like, one to three. And that could have some impacts on what's perceived as the height of the building, but it's a minimal impact for a major win in a town that could see some, you know, increase, and you're building the town hall to three feet anyway. So, it doesn't violate anything to go three feet.
Right. So, what you, I mean, I'll take, I can give you some background. So, the suggestion was made to increase from one to three. The reason you would do that would be in the case of a significant flood, the higher up you are, hopefully, the less damage you will sustain. There's also the potential to get some insurance benefit, because the town isn't a special flood hazard area. And so, we all have flood insurance. Everything from Claymont South is in a flood plain, and therefore, everybody has to carry flood insurance if you have any kind of a mortgage, or if you want some protection in case of a storm, you should carry flood insurance. So, we do participate in something called the Community Rating System, which is a series of items and checklists that Dawn and Jim go through to basically help show that we are a community taking action to reduce our flood risk, and the more action you do, the more points, and more points should equate to more of a discount in your flood insurance. So, the potential is, if we go to three feet, that we will be eligible for more of a discount. Other, a lot of things that go into that CRS rating system, but this alone isn't going to just push us over a threshold, but it's a step in the right direction. So, that's really the thinking behind it. You can see there's lots of other things about why you would do it.
I mean, you know, to me, you know, we have the ordinance, you know, it's the right thing to do. Every, you know, if we're gonna, if we push it off, now we're pushing off another three or four months, because, and then more and more houses are gonna be built with one foot, and that's, you know, not, I don't... I wanted it higher than one foot back in the day, when we made up the one foot, alright? And, you know, here we are today. We have an ordinance in front of us, so we're open to public hearing. Any public comments? See none? Any public comments online? See none?
So, one thing I need to check is the height ordinance, and maybe Dawn knows off the top of her head, but I think we use a formula for determining an alternate height restriction if you're in the flood zone, which might take into consideration the current one-foot free board. So, this ordinance is amending Chapter 101 only, and the height ordinance is elsewhere, somewhere else in the code.
Did you do, so if it's 101, is it also doing, just 101 for both residential and commercial?
I was led to believe that the concept of free board only appears in Chapter 101, but it might be in our, in the height ordinance as well, in Table 2. Okay, so Table 2 is not, this doesn't propose to amend Table 2, so I...
Well, you do in Section 3 in the ordinance, the draft ordinance, amend 10133B1 of the Code of Towning Beach relating to elevation requirements of residential and non-residential structures, as depicted by the strikeout.
Well, that's residential and non-residential. There's a provision in here related to manufactured homes, and I think there's a provision in here related to non-residential structures.
Right, that's accessory buildings.
Yep, accessory structures, yeah. So, you know, with, does, first of all, let's ask the town. Does town have any comments on what we were posting?
I would refer to Jim and Dawn on this.
Okay, and Jim or Dawn, do you, from what you saw, what we posted, and that Dave has provided for us, do you have any comments, questions, or anything to add?
Let me just say something real quick before Dawn jumps in. I think, in the spirit, it looks like a good thing to do.
Yeah.
But Dawn's gonna get into the unintended consequences that occur with raising this to three feet, and there are some unintended consequences here, and I'll just mention a couple. One, it's gonna cost, the cost of construction's gonna go up. You're gonna have visibility sites that people will be objecting to that when they, because it's gonna be substantially higher than what you see now. The three-feet free board, plus whatever base flood elevation is, could raise a house by six or seven feet in height, with including the 32-foot. So, it could go up to 38 feet, higher than the 35-foot that we have in general in a non-flood zone area. But that, I'll defer at this point to Dawn.
Yes, Jim, you are correct, that those are some potential unintended consequences. However, what we need to remember is that the majority of the term "free board" is found in our Flood Code 101. That's the majority of the incidences. And that particular code was approved by FEMA. The wording of that was approved by the State of Delaware and FEMA back in 2014 or 2015. So, if we, the town, wish to change any of that, we do need to have the State of Delaware and ultimately FEMA to approve that language. Now, from the training that I've received, if the town goes from a one-foot free board, which is what it is states currently, to a higher standard of a three-foot free board, I do not see where FEMA would be unhappy in any way, shape, or form. However, with that, if we automatically go in and change that, and FEMA approves that, then if we have not done our homework to find out what potentially could be the unintended consequences that by jumping from one-foot free board to a three-foot free board, that we could... I doubt seriously if FEMA would ever let us go back to a two-foot free board, a one-foot free board. They always are promoting a higher standard. Now, what could be the potential of unintended consequences, other than what Jim just spoke about, is that houses that are being elevated and raised, then they, the stairway to get into the... into the home may have to be a certain design that could only be input into that house and it go into the setback. It would be construction into our current zoning setbacks, or there has to be a total different kind of design of that stairway, from a long run to a switchback kind of stairway. We don't know what it would possibly bring about. It could also bring about having more fill dirt being brought in to that lot to accommodate the stairway and so forth. And would that, bringing in a fill possibly cause a potential problem with water running off onto the neighbors or onto the streets? We don't know, we've not evaluated it. So would it possibly be prudent on our part to talk with any other community that has gone from a one foot free board to a three foot free board in, in height? I don't know. I haven't found any, I haven't talked with any. Also, would it be prudent on our part, even though we're thinking we're gonna be trying to save our residents' premium money, their insurance premiums and discounts, is that really our residents of other towns getting those discounts? I haven't talked to any and so forth. I don't know, perhaps you folks have, but at the same time, I'm not against by any means going to a three foot free board. But I think we need to have a little bit more research into what could potentially be consequences that we haven't even thought about at this time, even though we want the best for our residents. So that's what I have to say. Sorry for being long-winded.
All right, so.
I just do have a question. Do you think you can actually identify all the potential consequences?
No.
And do you think that with that, the consequences, whatever they might be, let's say it is the stairs or the fill, is gonna outweigh if there's a significant flood event here that wiped out the town and we hadn't, we hadn't built things up higher, because we know that's eventually, climate change is, is happening, we're gonna have that problem? So if, if this is a proactive step to help mitigate some of the damage that could happen in one of those events? I, I guess I get the consequences? I guess I'm wondering, how long do you continue to evaluate, evaluate before you kind of move forward and take some kind of an action?
So I gotta, yeah, good, good comment. Great, thank you, Dawn. You know, all points well taken and very thorough, as you always are, so we really appreciate that. Any other comments in the public, or any town, or anybody else? I see none. Close the public hearing. All right, so my thought is, is we do, do an order, you know, let's, let's get a, let's get a motion with what we got, but the motion will be contingent upon if we push it out of P and Z before it goes to the commissioners, that we, that if the town's willing, we send it to the state and FEMA, and say, if we approve this at the town, are you gonna approve?
They're gonna approve.
Well, I mean, get that formally, because we just heard it's not formally done, because we don't want to send you something, we don't want to send something to commissioners, and then you have the same problem, because if I was a commissioner, I wouldn't want to approve it until they, you know, at least gave you the wink. So, yeah, I'm hearing you, but.
It won't coincide, if I understood, so I did have conversations with FEMA on this investigation, okay? So it won't, it, we can't actually enforce, we can vote on it, approve it, but then FEMA does have to approve it. It doesn't come into, it can't be enforced until they actually give you the approval. But all indications I got from FEMA was that this is a great thing, you should do it, move forward.
Looking for a motion, you know, because.
I'll make a motion to move it to three foot.
Yeah, I mean, looking for a second. Anyone? You have a second?
I think Dawn brought up some good points, though.
Okay. Jack? So what we're gonna do, what, what are we gonna do? Do research? I mean.
So I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, so we gotta.
Hold on, we got a motion, we're looking for a second.
Well, you don't have to get a second, I mean, I'm not saying, so it's, but it'd be up to you to determine whether you're gonna get a second as the chair, and if not, then you would, you would say the motion fails for lack of a second.
So Jack, are you, are you making a second?
No, he isn't.
No.
Okay. So it, motion fails. Because I always look for a second. What's that? Yeah, Jack, you said you had a motion, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, you know, and I, I get that we, this is something that we need to do, but I think that we need to understand the impacts of our residents on the potential cost as well as build, fill dirt runoff. I think that is a huge impact, as somebody that's in the real estate industry who looks at resale values every single day, I think that we need a clear, clearer picture of what that impact looks like. So I'd like to make a motion that we have a case study or some type of synopsis from area towns that have seen this or have started to see the impacts of this, so that at our next meeting, we can have a better picture to vote on this, to send this to the commission for their review and consideration.
All right, so can we get a little, maybe a little consultant help on this? Unless Dave's gonna volunteer? Dave's done, he's, he's done a lot of work on this, he's been to training, I mean, I mean, he, to assemble what he assembled here was asking a lot of him to volunteer. So I, we don't, you know, we can talk offline about who, what, where, when, but right now we're just gonna end the meeting and say we need to do some more research on this, or it's dead in the water. So I motion to close to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'll talk to you about that later.